First item is the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. For which it stands. One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice for all. Okay, thank you. So, welcome everyone to this special meeting for the Town of Andover Board of Finance. Obviously, the budget is our focus today. I do want to say upfront and the board may take this another direction ultimately, but our main focus today is going to be talking about the town's budget and trying to nail that down. So, we don't at this time plan to expend a lot of effort or maybe even any effort on the educational budget today. So, I see a lot of people from both the Board of Ad, I see Valerie, I see some other folks who I know have very, very concerned or interest, strong interest in the Board of Education budget, but we're probably not going to hit that today. So, I just want to let you guys know that upfront. Also, do want to remind everybody, we do try to stick to about a three-minute public speak session. And of course, if for some reason you have more to add, as I've said before, we'll allow you additional time once everybody who chooses to has had their opportunity to speak. Okay, so that being said, Amanda, do you want to poll anybody who would like to offer a public speak? Public discussion?
Everything. Okay, so first up, Val Bruno.
I'm good, but I would just like to tell those boards that as of today, we're all vaccinated over at the Board of Education. So, if you come into the building, we're good.
Thank you. Adrian Manilow?
You're muted, Adrian.
I don't know if you want to do it during a public speaker, you want me to ad hoc, but I've got, probably take about four minutes. Do you want me to do it now, Mark, or?
Go ahead and go and do it now and if, you know, if we need to.
No, that's fine. Alright, so a couple of things. I was able to have some conversation with Valerie this week regarding the budget and some of the questions that I had. And, you know, I feel like I may have unfairly, you know, said some things last week. And so, you know, I want to apologize to her for that, for being a little, you know, my impression of why she was doing things may have been wrong. So, I need to say that. Second of all, she also has informed me that we had talked a couple of months ago regarding the school budget, when they were first starting, and I basically said to her that if she could get, you know, down to around 220, that I would support the budget. And she's basically there now. She's at, you know, she's at 119, so, or 219. So, my reasoning for doing that and for explaining to her that I would support the budget was that the town revenues increased about 190, 90,000 between the supplementals. Motor vehicle is about 130 and about another 60-ish from our revenue adjustments, you know, for people that had building permits, things like that. And so, that will pick up some of the other slack. And so, really at that point, you know, we're pretty close to covering what they're asking for. You know, and not for nothing, but the bulk from here on out, if we actually look at it now, is contractuals. So, could they do some other things? Probably. But we probably have to give, we probably have to give her a chance, you know, to get a handle on the school and do some things that she wants to do. So, I'm willing to give her a chance to do that. She's assured me that, you know, if they get some grants or anything, that they would give that money back to the town if it covers some of the things that are in their budget that they need. So, I'm supportive of that. But more importantly, I think it's as a selectman or even a town person, coming to a board meeting and complaining doesn't help anybody. So, I do come to you with a solution. I looked at our revenue rollovers for the last couple of years. What we left on the table last year and what we rolled back in after the audit comes up to about $250,000. That is one mil. Right now, we're give or take 2.4 mils is what you're looking at. As it stands right now with the school budget the way it is and the town budget the way it is. If you're asking for 2.4 mils and we could take one mil off the table by not rolling any more money into our fund balance. And my point of that is that that's how we got into some of this mess in the first place with all these things that the town is trying to fix. We got into this habit of overfunding our reserve fund by just rolling this money in and never, never really pushing it forward. And so, over the course of 10 years, we accumulated, you know, give or take $3 million, you know? And that was a problem and that's what put us in this situation. So, that now we're trying to play catch-up with roads, with culverts and a variety of other things that are on the horizon. So, although I am not a fan of taking money out of reserve, we did it to get our reserve number where it needed to be on a regular daily basis. I don't agree with it. But this isn't about, this is about not letting money roll back into the reserve fund. This is about not letting money roll back into the reserve fund and using it correctly. It's already been, taxpayers have already agreed to it. They've been taxed on it. We shouldn't be putting it and increasing that fund balance anymore. That's my own take on it. I realize you're the Board of Finance and I can't force you to do anything. I can ask you to look at it, please, and realize that, you know, this isn't a, we don't want to be growing that fund balance anymore. That's going to get us back into the same situation. We've already taxed the taxpayers. They've agreed to it. Let's look at that, you know, 250, it takes away a mil. And then you're going to the town and asking for, you know, you know, give or take 1.5 mils, 1.4 mils. And I think that's, I would believe, given everything that's in this budget and all the things that are moving forward with this budget, that that's a passable budget. That's my take on it. You guys may have a different one and I'll let you guys sort that out. But I think it's an easy way to address this. If it fails a referendum, we should have something on the question that says yes or no. We, you know, is it too high, too low or something? But we can work that out later when we do that. And again, just my take on it, I'm not, you guys do it, you feel is appropriate. So, okay?
Alright, thanks Adrian. Appreciate that input. It's, I think, helpful. And by rollover, you're talking about rollover into the reserve. You're not.
Yeah, so we.
First, I thought you were talking about the AES rollover or something. Okay.
No, I mean, as a bulk though, we had, you know, give or take, you know, between the, between what we left on the table that we didn't take out, that was already excess. And then what we rolled in, we should have about 250-ish. So, that you can work with, you know? Your audit will play out the final number, obviously, but, you know, if you look at that number versus total, you know, total accumulation, I think we have the room to do that, you know? And the taxpayers have already proved it. So, it really should go to these things that we know we need it for, but unfortunately, you're not always able to spend it in a given year for a variety of reasons. So.
Okay, alright, agreed. Yeah, I think it's something that's been on the table. So.
Alright, thanks, Mark. Thank you, guys.
We'll go back to you if you need to.
Have a good meeting.
Thanks, Adrian.
Thank you, Adrian.
Yep, bye-bye.
Diane Grenier.
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Daniel Foran?
Hello, how are you guys all doing tonight?
Good, yeah.
Adrian, what I'm about to say is not directed towards you, okay? We'll just get that out there. What I do want to say is that there were some claims made last meeting about the education budget being padded, things of that sort. That is factually not true. On top of it, I feel that some of the claims that were made about what other schools were doing, I feel that, you know, some of the information obtained was obtained around the argument as to what the individual wanted to prove. I think if you have any questions about what other towns are doing or why we are doing what we are doing, it's important to ask our superintendent. She is very transparent, very knowledgeable and is well aware of what is going on in the towns surrounding us and throughout the state. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Prasan.
Almost that. Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, Scott. Jeff Murray. Jeff Murray, you're muted. Oh, there you are.
Sorry about that. I just want to reiterate my statements at the last meeting. I've sent you plenty of information about the school budgets. And I've yet to find any kindergarten in the state of Connecticut that has 10 students and a parent in each class. I still feel like there should be significant cuts and the school board should come in at a 0% increase. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Paula King.
All set, listening in tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. And we have Carol.
All set. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. And then we have phone number 860-977-3484. If you would like to participate, please press star six.
Okay, I would like to speak. This is Joanne Hebert. I am currently finished up for the day at work and wasn't able to log on to Zoom. So, here I am on my phone. Quickly, I know this is a meeting that important decisions are going to be made. I, as many boards know, I'm a familiar voice because, you know, I've taken in a lot of meetings, listened to everybody. And, you know, more importantly, like I said, listening to all the stakeholders. So, fact, we know the budget has to be cut because there's no way a 7.5% increase will pass. I think the time is now to look for cuts wherever they can be made in order to bring this increase down to a manageable number. So, I think the town side of the budget and the town manager has done a good job, sorry, long day, with combining things, looking for cuts, doing whatever he could to reduce some things. I agree too that we have to, as hard as it is, look at the educational side of the budget for further cuts. The data supports this. The BOF has been sent countless things, you know, supporting it, whether or not Mr. Foran agrees that we really, I'm not wasting my time by going to all these meetings. I really care. So, I don't, you know, find any happiness in asking for decreases or whatever. I just think the time is now that we have to. You know, we've all put a lot of time and effort into this and make sure that even on a long day, that I'm dialed in whichever way I can. So, I want to tell all of you that I'm making this statement as a very involved town resident, a mother of three young adults that are successful now that have gone through the educational system and RAM and also working in a school system. I'm sitting in a school right now doing some things that have to be done on my own, on my own dime, which is fine. That's the kind of person I am. No one says I have to do that. So, anyways, I have worked a lot with budgets and things like of that nature. So, I want to also speak directly to parents because even though I am asking for educational cuts, I do hear your voice. You support your beloved school. You're afraid that if money is cut, the value that your child receives is going to suffer. And I don't believe that at all. I think it's quite the opposite. If you really, really want your school to keep running and be sustainable with all the other things that are happening in town and the money that needs to be spent elsewhere, we really need to look at cutting that just to a manageable way. You know, given the enrollment, given what's been going on and just trying to do the best you can. If you don't want to cut teachers, you know, take a certain amount of money and try to, you know, cut that and maybe do something another year. So, again, the bigger picture here that I want parents to hear is that people don't want to move into Andover. There's not a lot, I mean, Andover is great. I love it. It's quiet. It's peaceful. But young families are not moving in because they want to go where they can get the most bang for their buck as far as their taxation. They're going to get a school, but in a lot of other towns, they get a lot more. And so, we need to keep it manageable to run the town, run the school, have families want to come so that enrollment can increase in years to come. And we don't keep seeing this declining enrollment. I myself work with a lot of young families that are bypassing Andover and going where there's a lot more amenities. I've said this in the public. So, again, it's a big picture thing. It's keep that manageable so we can do this stuff for the town and that's it. Thank you for your time and good luck with the hard job that the Board of Finance has to do.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Joanne.
Alright, we're all set. Mark, you're muted.
Once again, you think a year of this, I'd be an expert. Thank you, everybody. Just wanted to thank you for your input. We're going to move on to item three in our agenda, which is the only agenda item, which is to discuss and act upon the proposed budget. As I had suggested earlier, I think the board would like to focus primarily in the town budget. That's what we're going to look at and then probably look at maybe on line by line, but department by department tonight. We have some things that I think we can change. We talked about some things last week, but again, it's going to be on to the board to make that determination. But I would like to get some traction on maybe getting close to final budget recommendation for the town tonight if we can. For the board, what I would propose that we do is, first of all, kind of go through Eric's recommended, not recommended, but Eric's proposed cuts that we had last week. There aren't that many of them. We talked a little bit about them. It's, I'd like to find out whether, you know, there's some strong feeling one way or the other, we can implement those, move through them quickly. I don't want to have 23 votes tonight. I think that might be a very inefficient way to go. But let's go down through there. Let's go through these proposed ideas. Let's move through any remaining departments and see if anybody has any suggestions on where to make changes. And then we can go on through there. Yeah, Rob?
I have a quick question, just kind of as a point of information. The main, the number one on Eric's list. If memory serves, and correct me if I'm wrong, please do jump in and tell me if I'm wrong. The consolidation of the position that would save us $45,000, that was very provisional on agreement from the union, if memory serves?
Yeah.
Do we have an update on that?
Yeah, we do. Eric, do you want to go ahead and respond to that now since that's number one on your list anyway?
Yeah, so we can talk about that. So, what we had, based on what the Assistant Town Clerk had asked the town to do, we had proposed to the union combining the position of the Assistant Town Clerk and the Building Department Admin. The Assistant Town Clerk has kind of gotten cold feet and this afternoon told me she was not interested in it based on the conditions the union would have put in to do that. Now, that is not dead because the Board of Finance can certainly force it if they so choose. But I don't want to tell you what the Board of Selectmen is going to do because the Board of Selectmen has not made any decisions about that right now.
I can say that it may not be a dead issue yet.
Oh, I don't, I mean, you know, there's, the town has a lot of options if they want to do it. It's just, the options come with some serious negatives and the board would have to decide what they want to do about that.
Yeah, I think we need to have an executive session though with, with the employee in question and work through this. I don't think it's a dead issue even there. So.
Alright, so just to bring it back for the purpose of our discussion, that is up in the air.
Well.
What I'm just trying to say is if we were to try to make a decision tonight and say, okay, we can bank that 45, we can't really.
Sure you can. You're the Board of Finance. You can force that decision if you so choose.
Well, we can, we can't make the personnel decision. What we can do is peg the number, right? And.
True.
If it doesn't go through, we can, you know, we can recommend a change at the town budget meeting or we could, you know, we can make some other change down the road. Nothing's in stone. But.
I think if we cut it, if memory serves at the town budget meeting, you can't add, you can only cut.
Correct.
Overall, the top number, I believe.
Correct.
You can't cut individual line items either.
You can cut individual lines.
You just can't add to.
Yeah, that's right.
So, like the trooper got put back in, the bathroom at the field got taken out, you know?
Right, and it was a trade. Right, fair. I'm, alright, I was just trying to get clarity on that and thank you guys. I think I understand the state of play. Thanks. You're good.
And be clear, I've only known about this for a few hours. I mean, I'm going to have to have another discussion with the town's labor attorney and then we're going to have to sit down with the board and the board is going to have to decide what it is, how they want to proceed. You know, and the hard part is how do you incorporate a cut? You don't know. Yeah.
Which is my point.
Okay. Alright, I think what I'd like to do is just to kind of give us a structure and framework here. Let's move to, if I could, I'd open up this document, share that document that Eric had provided earlier. So, we can just go through these one by one. And Rob's already brought up one of the big ones here. So, this one is, as we mentioned, kind of up in the air. It seems to me that it would be problematic for us to cut this out of the budget at this time, though I think we all probably hoped we could do so. But if we take it out, the problem is that we obviously can't add it back in in the budget meeting if it turns out that we weren't able to get this deal done.
Well, I mean, you could add it in if you took it out now. And I'm not saying that's a good idea, but if you did take it out now, you could put it back in after the public hearing also prior to the meeting.
Prior to the budget. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's true. We could do that and just, it's another change.
We have another workshop next week. So, do we think we're going to get any clarity around this item in another week?
Yes.
Maybe.
That in itself is a lack of service.
There's a lot of moving parts to it. So, I mean, I can't guarantee we're going to wrap this up.
Let's be clear, if Eric is the pessimist and I'm the optimist.
We have a problem.
Right.
That's classic here, Adrian. Very, yeah, very good.
Eric, just to be clear, this would affect the Building Department?
Yes.
Salary line and benefits, correct?
Correct. What this would have done is it would have basically taken the building administrative position, which is technically a full-time 30-hour a week position with benefits and combined that with the Assistant Town Clerk position and made one full-time employee between the two of those is what this would have done. I mean, we could just choose not to, I mean, yeah.
My recommendation was, let's put this cut in and see where it gets us and we can make that change later, as Eric and the Gatorian mentioned. Anybody in the board disagree with that?
No, we have another couple of weeks before we're going to finalize this anyway.
Yeah, right. I'm okay with provisionally doing it. I just want to be clear for our own selves before we take this thing to a budget meeting.
Yeah.
That we have our ducks in a row.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can't put that in there if we think it may not happen. It just would be irresponsible. Okay, agreed. Alright, I'm making some notes in the budget spreadsheets to go along, but we'll go ahead and take a look at that. You guys are still seeing the Word document, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so item number two is to eliminate the Board of Finance legal budget. I'd recommend that we do so.
Concur.
Or feel differently.
Let, you know, it's different now and that was a very specific thing for specific time. I'm okay with letting it go. It's not a lot of money, but everything helps. So, let's do it.
I am also.
Me too.
Listen, I will, can I just say as a selectman, I think you guys should keep it. It gives you, it's great that you trust the Board of Selectmen that's there right now, but this isn't about you guys, this is about every Board of Finance. You guys should have that money because we could make a mistake too and you need to have a separate opinion. You know, we're not, we're not infallible. You guys need to, you guys need to protect the town. You know, you guys are like the last stop. So, you know, as much as I feel that we have a strong board and we're doing good things, maybe we, maybe we don't the next, the next link cycle. Or maybe we make a mistake and you guys need to know whether we've done this incorrectly. So, I mean, it's 2,500 bucks. It's not a lot of money, but it's enough for you guys to get a couple of opinions if you need it, you know?
I mean, that was our original take, Adrian, as you know.
I know, and listen, I appreciate that this Board of Finance is supportive of the Board of Selectmen. Protect, protect the town. Keep them, it's 2,500 bucks.
David, you've been around too and Kurt, you guys have any stronger feelings about any, Dave, you were here, I think, when this happened.
Yeah, I was here. I have to agree with Adrian. Unless there's a process where we need funds to get a legal opinion because if we remove this out of the, if something comes up on our board or future boards, the hands could be tied potentially to get some legal counsel. That concerns me. So, I'm not in favor of removing it.
I have a question. Is there, is there a way of reducing it instead of removing it?
I don't know what, I don't know, you know, what it buys us.
Yeah, I mean, the likelihood is it wouldn't, it wouldn't be spent. And it is not a material amount relative to the budget. So, from, you know, and Adrian, it kind of made that point and, you know, so it won't buy us a lot, but.
It's basically a rounding error. I was okay with letting it go, but I mean, the counterpoints are very good and valid. When we had a more contentious relationship between the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, it was put in because frankly, if we needed to question something and we had to go to the Board of Selectmen to get the approval to do so, it wasn't going to work. So, you know, the folks who are speaking up in favor of it are right for another context and that context can come again. So, they're not wrong and $2,500 isn't a lot of money. I'm just saying, you know, in an all hands on deck scenario, if we're looking desperately to make any cut we can, okay. But yeah, all things considered, I'd rather keep it. Sure.
Well, think of it this way. You guys cut the budget and we overspend out of the fund balance without going to the Board of Finance next year. Right? If you don't have that 2,500 bucks, you can't go get a legal opinion or draft a legal strategy to correct us without asking us to approve a PL.
Because you guys. I know where you live.
We know where you live.
Mark, if I could have a clarification. What stops us from using Mr. O'Brien, the town attorney, for an opinion?
So, we're already paying him.
We don't have any money.
No, so he's on retainer right now, but, I mean, listen, I like Dennis O'Brien. He is very good to us. But please keep in mind, he is not a young whippersnapper. And the next attorney probably will not, we will not be able to afford to keep on retainer. You know, he's doing this because he's semi-retired from his regular practice. He likes doing, you know, this type of work with towns. It's, you know, we're an outlier. He likes our little town. He thinks it's kind of fun getting involved. But the next attorney is not going to do it for anywhere near what he's doing it for. So, we're not going to be able to afford retainer. We're going to have to go to opinion by opinion work at that point. And we're going to have to be a little stingier about what we do.
So, because we, because he's on retainer, we still can't use him for an opinion?
Well, technically, Mark, as the Board of Finance Chair, because he's on retainer, could. And obviously Eric can, but it's not, but again, his contract is coming up again and he could decide not to renew it and then you guys are back to square one.
When is that contract? And Eric, you know?
The Board of Selectmen has to do the annual review for the attorney in the next couple of months. Then usually the contract is by fiscal year. So, July 1, that contract is up.
And he could decide he's not going to renew it. And then we're, again, we would have to go back to opinion by opinion.
And if you're paying 250 an hour, that's 10 hours.
Well, Debbie Downer, so.
Well, Debbie Downer, so twenty-five hundred dollars is not a lot of money, and in my life, my career, I have never been able to get a legal opinion for less than twenty, for, for less than twenty. So it's kind of a moot point, because if we have a serious problem, we're not gonna have the money anyways.
Right.
It gives you enough money to get started.
Yeah, Adrian does have a point there that we should strongly consider, you know, and as he said, this is you know, we have a, we do have a responsibility, uh, to, to retain some independence, so that is a, it is a reasonable concern.
Well, you know, we, we, we kick this around all night, but I, I kind of maybe call the question. Let's act on it. Yes or no? We could beat, we could beat around the bush all night on this, uh, this, this one.
Yeah, we could, and it's, it's, it's not really.
Not a significant amount of money to make up.
No.
All right, well, wait, we need a motion. Make your move.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to call the question.
No, no. Hold on. The motion has to be to cut it or, or not, so I mean, I, well, if it's in there, you don't have to cut it, so the motion would be to remove it.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we would need, we would wanna take motion to take action, so the motion in this case would be uh, a vote that the Board of Finance recommend that the legal, uh, portion of the, of the Board of Finance department expenses be removed from the budget.
That's right. That would be the motion.
Yeah, does anybody second that motion? This is the motion to remove.
I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion just to, for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I guess then I made the motion.
Yeah.
Seconds it.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Cause we actually have.
Kind of talked it out, so it's really, you know, let's go ahead and but, uh.
Okay, hearing no discussion, um, let's take a vote. Members of the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who's voting aye?
Louise.
Louise.
Kurt, Louise and you.
Kurt, Louise and me. Linda? Okay, you're voting yes to remove? Okay, all voting no?
Aye.
That's David.
Diana.
I will no stain.
And Rob is gonna abstain, okay, thank you.
Free rein next year, let's go after that budget.
Passes to remove, I'll just remind everybody, this is not me, we cannot change our minds at a later time.
Indeed.
Prior to the budget meeting.
That, yeah, you're on notice, Adrian, we're watching you.
Okay, if we could, let's go to the next item that we had here, this, uh, is to reduce, uh, wage increases for the non-union employees, obviously the union employee, that's, that's defined by contract. Um, what Eric put on the table here would be to reduce, uh, non-union employees from three to two percent, the town clerk from a, from a, uh, Board of Selectmen approved six percent increase to two percent. And reduce the salary for the registrars, each one by seven fifty, total salary gets us about forty-six hundred dollars. Um, we talked about this fairly significantly at our last meeting. Uh, I personally am not in favor of this. I think we, it's gonna cause more problems than it's ever gonna solve for us, it's not really material to the budget. Uh, that's my opinion. Uh, but I'd like to hear what the other, rest of the board thinks on this.
Completely agree, I think it's, it's for a minor amount of money, it's gonna stir up all sorts of problems, it's just you know, it's, it's a small effect on the budget, it's a big impact on those e- employees, and I, I think it's a terrible idea.
Great.
For the record, I am certainly not in favor of doing it.
I'm sure.
But you asked me to come up with seventy-five thousand dollars worth of cuts, and so I don't, there, there were not a lot of options to do that.
Eric, we get, I, I think, I hope everybody gets that. Uh, it's just like when we had this discussion with the Board of Ed years ago, when we had Valerie come to us and, and give us scenarios, nobody wanted to do it. Um, nobody wanted to do it. But i- it was just, you know, all hands on deck, everything we could find. Uh, in, in this particular scenario, I, I don't, the bang is there for the buck.
Anybody else, Louise, Kurt, anybody wanna, David? Would anybody like to make a motion to, uh, reduce wage increases as a recommendation of our budget? As a part of our budget recommendation? Okay, I'm hearing none, so let's move on to item four. Reduce the Board of Selectmen's salary stipend from twelve hundred to a thousand dollars, it saves us eight hundred dollars.
Adrian, how do you feel about that?
Caught it, I don't care, I donate my salary every year.
Gives it back anyway.
I'm kidding, man, I'm kidding, that was the joke, anyway.
Take it, take it.
I mean, it saves us, it saves us a whopping eight hundred dollars. Um. So, from the standpoint of the budget impact, it's negligible. Um, but whatever. We don't get a stipend, so whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that could be your argument.
I mean. Sorry, guys, getting a call.
Great bank tone, Rob.
Yeah, right?
Any appetite for doing that, um, unless somebody wants to make a motion that that be part of a recommendation.
Can we? Is it possible, uh, to make it, just to table that and come back to it?
Absolutely.
If we're eight hundred dollars away.
We have our budget meeting. Anything could be changed.
Yeah, well, so, fine, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it either way, I don't feel strongly either way, does anybody feel strongly either way?
I think it's more of a symbolic gesture than anything else, and, you know.
I think they all understand the level of effort and the, you know, the site visits, uh, you know, things that they have to do occasionally that frankly, most of us don't have to do, so.
But to be fair, Mark, uh, from my point of view, the Board of Finance puts in just as much time, you know, and so does, you know, so does planning and zoning, and so does, you know, all, all the other boards, I mean, I, I get it. I, I get that it was structured that way, but, you know, I, I mean, I just don't feel that it's that's one of the reasons I give mine back, cause I don't feel that anyone else, nobody else is getting a salary, and they're all doing the same amount of work as us, and on some level, so.
What extent to which is, this is a little bit of an artifact to the, the before time, when we had no town administrator?
I think it's a lot of an artifact, to be honest with you. Um, I, I think that's a very fair question. Um, I know some people would like it, but, um, I, I can always speak for me, you know? I know some other board members that, that definitely appreciate it, so. But that's my opinion. You might wanna take a survey of the rest, though.
Well, I think we have, and that was the recommended budget that they passed on, right, I think if the Board of Selectmen felt strongly, they didn't want that, it would have come out of the budget that we got, so I think we already, you know, we can take that as confirmation that they feel it's appropriate.
I, I personally think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a reach for eight hundred bucks, um, we're really splitting hairs here that, uh, I don't think it's gonna make a difference either way, there are other larger fish to fry here.
We can always make more money than to be more than a hundred bucks, though.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I, I, I agree with the symbolism argument, though. That makes sense.
So I will tell you that there is precedence for that, one prior Board of Finance was pissed at the Board of Selectmen for not delivering a budget to the Board of Finance in time.
You gotta go there.
Deliberately cut their budget, um, you know, to encourage them to produce their budgets on time.
I remember that.
I vaguely recall such a thing, was I involved?
I may have made that motion.
This week, uh, for this budget year, so, um, unless somebody wants to make a motion to include that in our recommendations, I'd like to move on to item five.
Fair mark, sorry.
Okay. Item five is to reduce the Assessor Legal Counsel line item, we talked a little bit about this previously too, there's, you could do a thousand to three thousand dollar savings. Eric feels it's risky in the revaluation year, it's hard to argue with that, I think, but, um, what do you, what do you guys think?
I mean, I agree, and this is exactly the, the last year you'd do it, you'd do it in a quiet year, not in a year where you're expecting lawsuits.
So, for the record, we do shrink this budget, um, that line item in the non-reval years. Um, but in past reval years, we have bumped that up, so.
Have we, uh, Eric, just, I mean, this is a small monominy as well, all these things are past your first item. Um, have we in the past reval years spent this kind of money?
Oh, yes.
I think we've gone over.
And more, a lot more.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, so I'm thinking cutting this is just shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, I, I mean, the, the hard part is, it's one of those moving targets where you really never know, it just simply depends on how many people sue the town. It depends a lot on the Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Um, you know, and what they do, it depends on people's moods. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into it. Um, so, but yes, we have considerably overrun that in the past. Um, when people.
Fifteen or sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
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 And the reality is that property values have been on the rise during the pandemic, and people may not necessarily see that in their day-to-day life, and
Right.
That could be a disconnect that is gonna lead to disagreements that may not have occurred in a non-pandemic year.
Yeah, that's, that's true, and I mean, if memory serves, I mean, that's what I was remembering, Adrian, is that I almost feel like we had to pull from contingency one year for that.
Yeah, we, we did, we did shift money around.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's a cut that doesn't make any sense to me. I, I, I appreciate being put on the table, Eric, and I know you're not vouching for it as a thing that you wanna do, I, I'm just saying.
Right, listen, you guys have a handle on this, I addressed the issues I had concern with, um, uh, it looks like Eric has some great support or reasons for everything else, so I'm gonna let you guys go, good luck.
Okay, so we can go back to the Board of Selectmen thing once Eric, uh, Adrian leaves.
Do what you need to do, guys.
All right, thanks, thanks, Adrian. Okay, um, back to item five here, wanna keep this moving along, does anybody feel that we should reduce this or put it on the table? Take a vote?
Keep it.
Yeah, I'm with keeping it.
Okay, that was a keep it, is that I hear that correctly? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, hearing, hearing no other opinions, let's move on to item six. Eliminate the old firehouse alarm maintenance and stop heating the building completely, so Eric, you talked a little bit about this before.
Sure.
So, and, I'm I'm wondering, is, is this an either or, 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 you know, is this an either or, but we don't have to do both, right, and we could do with is there any reason to keep the alarm maintenance going versus the heating?
No, I mean, I, I, I think we're probably not going to bother to alarm that building going forward. I mean, it's a little risky, because we do have three senior transportation vehicles, so you know, worst-case scenario, we burn them all up in a fire and have to go to Kerma to replace the vehicles, which would be unfortunate. Um, but if we really are taking the heating system out of the building and we're down to very minimal electrical loads, the chances of it catching on fire is greatly reduced also, so, I mean.
I mean, isn't this the first step to like putting that building to bed, I mean, it's gotta go, so to speak. We just need to find a place for the vehicles.
Yeah, and, and we are working on that, I mean, we're, you know, we're looking at the, we're looking at a couple options at Public Works. Um, you know, for storing the vehicles there, I mean, ideally, you know, it's nice to have them indoors, and it's nice to have many building, cause that way the drivers don't, you know, complain as much, but, you know, at the end of the week, I, I mean, the diesel vehicle would have to be plugged in, so whatever building it goes into, if we're not heating it, we have to have the ability to plug the thing in, so it will start in the cold, but that's our only real, you know. Right.
Yeah, but that, that may require some alterations, we thought possibly too, so is that really gonna be a net savings, we talked a little bit about that, do you need block heaters and, and fuel tank heaters?
Yeah, and you know what, that was on my list, and I did not check into that, so that was my fault.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you've gotta do either of those things, you're gonna chew this up pretty quick.
Yep.
Oh, I think we would all agree that there probably needs to be a long-term solution to, to this situation. Uh, that might make a little more sense for us as a town.
Yeah, we, we desperately need to get out of that building completely.
All right.
No question.
So we may, we may have some savings with alarm maintenance, but likely we're either gonna have to heat, or we're gonna have to alter the vehicles, do some modifications to allow them to operate in the cold weather. Doesn't sound like there's really gonna be much savings here, it might be a little bit of money, but.
Yeah, it's definitely not a big, big number, no question.
All right, well, I'd say we probably, you guys make your best judgment, and you, you, Eric and your uh, what to do with the alarm, but I, I don't know that we actually changed the budget line items for this. Anybody on the board feel differently?
Kurt, you mean?
All right, your question is?
I was just wondering if anybody felt differently, like we should, we should take, take a budget cut here somewhere to support this.
And, and you, you, in regards to the old firehouse you're talking about?
Yeah, 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 do we wanna stop heating it?
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna level it and have it all hauled away.
Back to my point about a long.
The bus is downtown garage, no matter what we have to do for now, the place is an ice sore, and, uh, you know, someday, somebody's gonna get hurt there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we need a long-term plan.
Sure do.
And some, some point it becomes a liability, right?
I, I think it's a liability right now with the mold in there.
Yeah. Well, if we could, let's, let's move on to item seven, um, reduce the overtime for snow removal. Um, so that, that, if we did discuss this at the other, the other meeting we had, um, if everyone remembers that, uh, it sounds like what we've got budgeted currently is not quite worst-case scenario, but bad-case scenario. So what Eric was suggesting is we could take out some of the overtime budget for, for the snow removal. Um, and still, most years, we would be okay, depending on the number of plowable events. Uh, but if we had a bad year, we would, we would run over budget. So one of the things that Eric hits here, and Eric, I'd like you to clarify this a little bit, says we decided as the town to accept lower expectations for road surfaces and and angry, and result potentially of angry residents, is it, is that really the trade-off, or, or is the trade-off that we might have to hit some contingency fund in order to, to cover the plowable events?
Well, I mean, both those things are possible, so on average, in Connecticut, there are thirteen plowable events per year. Uh, but there are other times when you're gonna salt because of ice. Now, it's anybody's guess when those events are gonna occur, if they all line up during the middle of the workday, you know, you don't run any overtime, you know, if it happens on Sunday, you're paying double time, so it's really, it's, it's all over the map on, on um, the last two to three years, we've had very mild winters. Um, so, we've been under that historic threshold by quite a bit. Like this year, for instance, we've only gone through, well, we've gone through ballpark around fifteen thousand dollars in overtime expenses for the department. Um, just on snow removal. Um, so, you know, but we also had two really long stretches of a month each where we had no snow events whatsoever. So, what I'm saying is that if we really think global warming trends are gonna hold, and we're going to be running on average less events, we can reduce that number. Right now, I figure we're gonna go over you know, about every fourth year, you know, we would be well over, I mean, if you look at the trends. Um, if you reduce that, you know, maybe you, you design it so half the years you're over and half the years you're under.
That's what I would suggest.
Comfort level is.
Now, let's not, let's not budget for extremes, as long as it's not so egregious that we can't, we can't cover it through either some other transfer or through a contingency funding.
What are we budgeting for now in this proposed budget? What are we budgeting for now in this proposed budget? What's the number?
Uh, we budget twenty-five thousand a year in overtime costs for snow removal.
And to go over that would be an extreme year is what you're saying.
Um, I would say if you look at historical trends, that should be about right. For say the twenty year average historical year. We should be somewhere around there.
So in, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we spent ten thousand eight hundred. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, year to date, we spent twelve, well, assuming this is up to date, it may not be. Twelve thousand one fifty, so.
Hardly any snow, right? So that would be.
And some of that was misallocation. I think we're, we're truly around fifteen thousand right now. So yes, the last two years, we definitely underspent that budget. Um, you know, and I've definitely sat through when we've, you know, overspent that budget when it was twenty-five thousand. So, so there's, there's a lot of variability. Most years were going to be under twenty-five thousand. I would say most years were probably under twenty thousand, but, you know. It just depends on your comfort level. And if you reduce it, you got to know that fairly regularly. They're going to exceed that.
I'm personally comfortable with that. I think that's how we should budget, as long as we have the ability to cover it elsewhere, which we do.
You mean, so keeping the twenty-five that we have in there is what you're saying?
No, I think we should reduce it.
We just, so my question to Eric is if we reduce it, okay, I get that we may have to find money somewhere else. For, you know, um, average year that we have too much now, but we're not going to. And normally just have lower expectations for the road service, because if we have to treat the roads, we have to treat the roads. We're not going to do less treating.
See, I, I kind of disagree with that. I mean.
Because that's the safety.
There are a lot of places you go that don't do anywhere near as good a job as we do with road cleaning. You know, we have accepted the fact that we are going to use the hell out of public works. And we're going to try to do a really good job all the time. And that's the expectation that's set. That's not the expectation that's set in every community. Um, you, you know, and, you know, if we set a lower expectation, we can spend less money. But that is the expectation of the community. So if we do that, we have to do it deliberately knowing that. Hey, you know what? I mean, sometimes our roads are going to be icy. Deal with it. You know, and, and I don't know that we necessarily want to do that.
I don't think we do. People don't know how to drive, so.
Back to our budgeting question, you know, there's, there's two different things going on here. One is that do we as a community feel comfortable with reducing the level of service on our, on our snow and ice removal? That's one question. I think that that's almost outside of the purview of this discussion. I mean, that is one, one way you could reduce this budget, because if we are comfortable with that, boom, let's make the decision to take ten grand out. The others, what I'm proposing is that we ought to at least take ten grand out, just because we're over budgeting on average. And then, you know what? If we decide we don't want to reduce the, the level of services. The level of, of, of work on the, on the, on the roads, you know, though, uh, then I, I'm okay with that. But I, I don't think we should over budget to take care of unusual years. I think we have a contingency opportunity to handle that when and if it's needed.
I agree. I think we should have enough money in there to deal with things on an average basis, not, you know, consistently budgeting over.
The only comment I would add is that the more we do this with various budget line items. Where we try to get things close to the bone and, um, budget for the average year. And rely on contingency to cover it. We have to just be mindful of the level of the contingency and whether we really have enough in there.
Yeah.
To account for a black swan kind of year. Uh, by and large, I'm agreeing, agreeing with you guys. I, I think you're right that we should budget for kind of the new normal. Uh, we haven't had. A significant snow year for a while now, and we should maybe budget accordingly. But.
That's wrong.
Where that, you know, if we have to dip into contingency for this, that, and the other thing. We have what, fifty in contingency? I'm going to remind me, is it fifty or seventy-five?
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, it, that can go fast if we need it. That said, I, I think I'm generally in agreement with those who are saying we should reduce this a bit. That's all.
I guess I would move that we recommend that we reduce this line item by ten thousand dollars. That's, I'm going to make that motion. Normally as chair, I avoid doing that, but just to kind of move this along. Uh, my recommendation would be that the board, my, my motion is that the board recommend. Uh, the budget line item, uh, be ten thousand dollars less. So let me set that for fifteen thousand dollars instead of the twenty-five thousand dollars. With the understanding that, uh, we likely can cover that out of contingency.
I'll second it. Oh.
Okay, I got Louise on the second. Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, let's vote all in favor. Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, that motion passes. We'll put that in our, plug that in our, uh, our sheet. Thank you, guys. Next item, street lighting. So Eric, you want to, this one, I think it's a little bit, uh. Uh, it's a little, little bit back and forth. This has got kind of interesting, you know, I, I'm, I'm not generally a fan of, of street lighting. I prefer to see dark skies, but I think it was Kurt that made a good point that, um, where, where we actually left it in last. Time we went around as the town and eliminated the lighting, was it the intersections for safety purposes? And I haven't gone around and examined this, so I don't really know kind of what this current status is, but does anybody have any further comments on that? Eric, Eric, is there any potential to convert some of this to LED and just save electrical costs?
Yeah, most of our street lights are converted to LEDs. The ones that are not are the ones out in front of the town hall and the ones on the athletic field. And I have looked into with Rick at Lenko, what we would have to do with athletic field lighting. Um, I, I think if we were ever going to do it, we would probably, it gets tougher, right? Because the lighting there is a lot for security, but it's not a lot to play. And in the fall, those lights are used to extend the season. In fact, if you notice, they bring in one or two portable light towers. Um, diesel light towers, so they can play after dark in the fall. Um, I mean, long term, we would probably be better off to switching to some kind of combo setup. Where we set up actual stadium lighting, but have all but just a few of them turn off a security lighting. And feed it from the meter we already have there that runs the pumps in the irrigation system. But that's a fairly expensive, longer term solution. Um. I know I got a lot of complaints in the fall when the lights weren't working because they were burned out. Um, the soccer players complained to me pretty incessantly.
Well, there's, there's an off, and I, I don't, I'm sure you guys looked at this with Lenko, but I, there still is. And it's gotten easier. And I know, because I've done it recently with, with, uh, my company. But we've, you know, there's still a fairly, you know, reasonable ability to get rebates and support from Eversource Energy. Or whoever your, your supplier is, right?
Yeah, and, and I, I think, I mean, I feel like what that has to do is again, that has to be. Part of, I mean, a bunch of different people want to do a bunch of different things down at the athletic fields. And at some point, the town needs to appoint a grounds committee. And start making some of these decisions and setting priorities. But, you know, the board decided not to do that in the fall. Um, you know, for whatever reason. So, so I feel like there's got to be a plan before we arbitrarily start saying we're going to go do a lighting upgrade at this facility.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And I, I don't, I'm not necessarily advocating for it. I'm just wondering. You know, I just want to make sure we're planning for savings, if that's an opportunity, I guess.
Sure.
Mark, uh, if I can make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, in nineteen eighty-eight, uh, we had our fiftieth anniversary celebration, uh. Fifty years for the fire department. And, uh, I had, uh. Uh, picked up, I think it was four of these one thousand, we used to call it one thousand, uh. Watt, uh, floodlights on brackets that we took down from some. Uh, it was a, maybe, may have even been Monaco Ford's, uh, lot. Uh, where they used to light up the lot with their cars. Uh, he, he had upgraded to a different light. Anyways. These things that at no cost, uh, to the town of Andover. Um, just my labor on a weekend with the okay of my, my supervisors. And this was under the old Connecticut Light and Power. Um, we installed those lights. We installed the wiring to light those lights and probably for the. Uh, good part of fifteen plus years, um, those lights went unmetered. And were on every night, um, at no cost at the town of Andover. So actually, uh, you know, to, to cut anything from street lighting, I'm totally against because we actually owe them money. Um, but it was done in kind because it was a community event. And, uh, you know, at that time, the company was decent with doing that. The, the new company, Eversource Energy, is not like that. They have to meter every kilowatt that's used, but, uh. Um, as far as I'm concerned, the town of Andover owes them a lot of, lot of, lot of money worth of usage for, uh, free electricity. So I, I am totally against cutting any type of street lighting in this town, because we don't have enough. I think I said that the last time, but, uh, I'll, I'll leave it with that. Say, oh, well, no, I will add something. Same with the monument site. You know, the, uh, the famous monument site. And I think I, I talked about that last time too. All that original, uh, uh, ser- service that's still there. Which I think is now metered, uh, or maybe not, was, was all free and, and a donation from Connecticut Light and Power.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, does anybody want to suggest a motion to, to make changes here? I'm, I'm not. Uh, I'm not necessarily in favor of it at this time, but somebody else may be.
Make a decision on this because I don't know the downside to the safety side of it. And to me, when it comes to safety items, six thousand dollars isn't a lot of money to save. For one person getting hurt. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I mean, you have to look at it from a kind of a. Look at it as a statistical side. But, uh, yeah. Alright, if nobody has any objections, let's move on to item nine. Item nine was to reduce the fire commission budget by three percent. Um, is, was that just a? Round number, uh, Eric, or was that something that, you know, you?
No, that was a completely round number, because there's two entities that we essentially just write checks to as a town. One is the Board of Fire Commission, the other is the Andover Public Library. So, you know, I said, if we're, we're proposing an overall reduction, that's going to be somewhere in that range. Then that would be the effect on the fire commission, and that would be the effect on the library.
Yeah. And, you know, I guess Kurt probably would be in the best position to comment on what impact something like this might have.
Yes, I will. Uh, it, it, I, I just think it's pretty tough to, uh, to cut a zero increase budget. Uh, from last year as far as operating goes. And where the cuts will, will, if, if the cuts are. Uh, if, if the three percent cut does go through, it's gonna, it's gonna affect training. It's going to affect building maintenance and vehicle maintenance. Um, and, and keep in mind, I mean, our newest fire engine is a two thousand five, so. Um, and it goes as low as a nineteen eighty-nine vehicle next door. Uh, we do keep them a long time and, and it, it's, it's not, it doesn't, it, it, it. It's not free maintenance, trust me, especially on the older vehicles. So it's getting to be hard to find parts and things like that. But, um, I, I think it's ludicrous to cut a zero, a zero increase budget that, that we presented to the town originally. Um, we, uh, were, were basically kind of thought we were going in with a hundred thousand dollar request for capital. And that was, I think, cut by, we say, Eric, last month, uh, fifty thousand?
It was cut twenty-five thousand by the.
Excuse me, twenty-five thousand from that, so, and those were, uh, those were, uh. Uh, much needed, uh, capital equipment that, uh, did go through Capital Improvement Committee first. Uh, after the, after the fire committee pushed it through, so, um. But training and things like that. And we're also wondering how much, how much of the COVID nineteen money? That may be coming to the state or the town of Andover that, uh, may come our way at, at next door. Because if everybody remembers, I mean, they're, they're training tonight on, on, on some, some COVID protocols still. Um, and we're still running calls every day, uh, you know, and, uh. The dispatcher tells us whether it's, uh, you know, the, 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 the person we're going to pick up has been tested or vaccinated or anything else. Uh, those actually come through. So these people next door are, are working twenty-four seven, uh, still. Uh, you know, to protect the townspeople, you know, Andover and the, and the people passing through. That's my, uh, I'll, I'll end it with that. Uh, I, I, as you know, I, I, I won't vote. Uh, I'll abstain from any vote, uh, regarding this, but, uh, um, that would be, to cut a three percent would be devastating. In the training end of it.
And training is key to keeping these guys safe. And, and while I know a little bit from my involvement in Southfield and. And maintenance is a constant thing. These things don't get used very often. It'd be surprising how much maintenance they require from sitting around. Sometimes, so.
And, and this, one, one last, one last, uh, note is, we have, uh, we have brought in probably. Well, Chief Mike and, and the, and the group has brought in probably close to a dozen cadet and junior members. Um, a lot of them from Mr. Bancroft's EMT class up at Ramp High School. Uh, both, uh, both, you know, guys and girls, uh, are joining the town of Andover Fire Department to, uh. To, uh, practice their skills, so, uh.
And that's.
There's some training expenses there for new people.
Exactly. I mean, this, you know, we, we did lower the age to fourteen and, uh. It was slow getting started, but right now it's kind of taken off. And like I said, we're, we're looking at a dozen young kids that are the future of this department. Uh, to, to run it. So as volunteers, both boys and girls, so, uh. Um, you know, if anybody stopped by and actually meet, meet, meet these kids and meet the rest of the people that are doing the job every day twenty-four seven. I'll end it with that. Sorry.
Actually, I, I personally am not going to propose anything having to do with this. Does anybody feel like we should? Uh, maybe want to make a motion to reduce the fire commission budget?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to item ten. Uh, reduce the library payroll operations by budget by three percent. I'll just say upfront, I would not support this. You probably never hear me support.
I mean, the only thing that's expensive in the library is really, it's all salary. I mean, there's nothing you can.
Right.
Right.
So, and I want to be very clear that that would result in less hours of operation. Um, so that is not a low impact cut.
Well, I say no on that too.
It's, it's, I'm going to save a lot of money.
I say no.
For, you know, one of the few cool things this town has is a great little library.
Yeah.
And can I say something? The, the library, we haven't had a meeting since this came out. But I'm sure it won't be much, but the library can come up with. A few cuts if you're talking like five hundred dollars here and there. Because their operations was zero from last year too, and they had two percent increases and raises. Which really leaves little wiggle room if you take three percent off the whole budget.
Yeah. I, I say that, let's not touch it.
Agreed.
I mean. Anybody feels differently now? Your opportunity to speak. Okay, hearing none. Let's move to item eleven. Reduce the Recreation Commission budget. Uh, trim rental and programs by, by two thousand dollars, so. What's the rental and programs? Isn't the, what's the rental defined that for us, if you would?
The rental is basically two porta potties, one at the athletic field, one at the rail trail.
Okay.
So I mean, the likely. So, I mean, the likely one to cut, if you had to cut one, would be the one at the rail trail and at the Andover Museum. You know, I personally think it's worthwhile, but, you know, I gave you a no stones unturned. I mean, you can also, if you cut the regular rec commission, the programs budget, no, you're just talking about hosting less events per year, and that's, that's really it.
Their budget is so small to begin with. I mean.
That's correct.
And you know what? We do need to have some kind of sense of community and some kind of, you know, this, this town doesn't bring that much to the table for people.
I'll, I'll echo what, well, kind of what Diane said, but really echo what Rob said. It's one of the cool things in this town. And, you know, we, we can support that. I'm personally in favor of it.
Yeah, a- again, if this was a, a cut that would actually really move this budget, then I might feel differently, but for two thousand dollars, really?
Right, but I, I mean, I guess my global point is that, you know, there, it's very rare that you're gonna find some aha thing that, you know, other than the residents.
Trouver, trooper.
Let's not go there.
Right, it, I, I'm just saying that, you know, if you want to make big cuts, you're whacking out a whole department, which.
We know. We know, Eric, we know. We asked you for this, you produced it, I get it.
Right, yep, understood.
Okay. Does anybody feel like we should reduce the Recreation Commission budget? Okay, hearing none. I'll just point out that at this point, we have supported a recommendation of about a reduction of fifty-seven thousand five hundred from the budget so far. Eric goes on here, two pools of money from the budget that we could use to preload expenses for next year. The first is the thirty thousand town allotted for the software transition that has not been used. So Eric, you're basically proposing that this could be used to cover expenses for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two?
I mean, that's one possibility is at the end of the year, allocate that. You could, for instance, pick one of the capital items and transfer this money into that capital item and then reduce the line item for the capital budget. For instance, if you so chose. That would be one possible approach to do that.
I have a question, just, so I understand it fully. Earlier tonight, when Adrian was talking about some money that's going to be potentially rolled over. Uh, this would be separate and apart from that or part of that?
Well, so this is money that's in this year's budget.
So it's not a capital rollover.
It's separate.
The operating budget.
Short answer, yeah, it would be separate.
So the, the answer is if you don't spend it and you don't do something with it, then that money would go into the unexpended fund balance and would be available roughly a year from now when we audited the books. And we're sure where we are.
Right, and, and I just wanted to just clarify that that is separate and apart from what Asia was talking about. So if he talks about there being two fifty.
Looking at my phone.
If there was two fifty, it's not two twenty plus this, it's two fifty potentially plus this.
Correct.
Think we need to just run through those numbers, but yeah, I think that that's correct.
Okay, that's all, and I understand it's all provisional. That's fine. I, I just want it from, to have it in my own head, so I understand what we're talking about. My general feeling is in a situation like this, that this makes a lot of sense, that to, to try and alleviate things if we've over budgeted or rather under expended or whatever happened, that we can take that and we can use as an offset for next year. And it's an operating expense already. It's not a capital expense. We're not mixing and matching. I, I love it. Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
But weren't we looking at, and I don't know where the money was going to come, we talked about that twenty thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial that we have to find the money out of this year's budget, so isn't that money up for grabs for that?
Well, very possibly. You know, because the reality is the only other place to take it is out of the Building and Grounds Fund, which currently started off, I think we've got a little over forty thousand dollars left in that fund. As a round number, we got to assume we're going to knock off about twenty thousand dealing with fire alarms and new fire alarms for buildings. And I think we've already accounted for about another three thousand of that for replacing the overhead doors at the transfer station and some work on the doors at the Public Works Building. I think we're going to chew up another piece of that. We, we definitely have some more electrical issues we have to deal with at the town hall. We're, yeah, which we're still working out with Lenco, how much that's going to cost. So, yeah, if we don't take it out of there, we're taking it out of the Building and Grounds Fund and we're just reducing the other things we're doing, basically. You know, and putting stuff off.
I don't want to bank on spending that money if we're really not going to have it because we're going to use it for stuff this year.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think you could take one pool or the other. You know, you could leave either the COVID relief money and allocate the other, plan on allocating the other to a capital item, or, you know, you could do the COVID relief and leave the other thirty thousand and assume you were going to end up spending that. I mean, the good news is we, we haven't touched contingency and we're doing okay on the budget. So I think the budget is still going to come out in the green. It's not going to be a lot, though. So we're not going to be doing what we did last year, which is transfer, you know, a hundred plus thousand dollars into funds. But though, you know, those two funds right there, the COVID money and then the money for software, you know, potentially could end up. You know, one of those two could end up getting transferred.
What's, what's remaining in the COVID nineteen relief funding, Eric? Do you know?
I, somewhere around eighteen thousand dollars.
So that's pretty close to the twenty thousand we authorized last meeting.
Yeah.
The, for the monument. Okay.
Well, we know what we have left over that we need to, that we don't really want it to roll into the unexpended funds because we want to keep that at, what, ten percent?
Yeah, once we're audited.
Need the audit. Need the audit.
Right, so, so we have Diane a very preliminary audit number. So that preliminary audit number is that we have, oh, somewhere around three percent, you know, two to three percent of the reserve, you know, that we're, in other words, our reserve after the audit is going to be somewhere around between twelve percent and thirteen percent.
We want to keep it at ten, right?
Right, so we can, well, I mean, we as a town have decided we want to keep it, you know, at ten. Our auditor will tell you that the, the gap accounting standards is two months, which is seventeen percent. But, he would also tell you that most towns don't hold that much and hold less. So if we were to continue the ten percent being our target, we can theoretically run about two hundred and fifty thousand safely. Now, this is just preliminary numbers from the auditor, too, but he was pretty confident in that. He was pretty sure we could do, we could do two fifty if we had, if we chose.
I'd like to pipe up and.
We have like two fifty to offset.
Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I, I was just going to comment that maybe we should take that up separately.
Yeah, okay.
And my only comment to add to it is that, to remind everyone, I'm sure most everybody here knows this, but the, the ten percent value was politically driven as much as anything. If I had my druthers, we'd be running fifteen, twenty percent, you know, it's, it's nice to have a big reserve. It, our issue was that it was putting a target on our backs at the state level.
Right.
Uh, so we're, we're, you know, ten to twelve percent is hardly crazy to have as a reserve. The question of whether we want to use that reserve to plug some capital fund, you know, and do some more roadwork makes sense to me. I hate the idea of using it to offset operating expenses.
Well, let's, let's just take these line items out if we could. You know, Diane made a good point that we, we had looked at this thirty thousand as a possible source of funding for the, for the memorial park, but currently we also have about eighteen left in COVID nineteen relief funding, which we have some flexibility with. You know, all in, that's about forty-eight thousand, you know, take out twenty grand, that still leaves us, you know, twenty-eight thousand. Maybe, maybe we rounded down to twenty-five thousand that we could take out of a capital fund and or take, take out of a capital fund transfer for next year and cover that. I mean, that's, that would be one way to do it. Between those.
Seems reasonable. We just need to pick a fund.
Yeah.
If we think we can count on that money, then I'm comfortable moving forward on that. What do we have? So, you know, for instance, you know, we, we cut, or rather, the board of selectmen cut the fire department capital by twenty-five thousand. What do we have that we haven't touched that we could maybe cut and plug this money into?
Well, in, in theory, it's going to be a wash, right?
Correct, I, I know, I'm just trying to.
What we're actually doing is pre-funding this account, so, you know, we were going to take another twenty-five out of the tree removal fund. We would just, you know, we're just going to pre-fund that, right, with this year.
Correct. Uh, yeah, I guess it doesn't, it, it truly doesn't matter which fund we pick. I don't know, I was just going to pick something else.
Eric, you have any strong feelings about that, one way or the other, how we would handle that? Makes sense? You or Sherry have any input?
Um, if you were to put it in now, I would say put it into the tree removal fund. Because in truth, we're talking about doing a little work in about two weeks and bringing distinctive tree care in. And I'm not sure we have enough money currently budgeted for everything we were going to try to get them to do now. So if you did that, you could put that money in now, you know, decide to transfer that. Actually, you can't do it technically till tomorrow. April first, you can do it as a board and, because you're in the last, you know, the last quarter. And then you could back off, back twenty-five thousand out of the tree budget if you preloaded. You could do that.
Can we make a motion? Does anybody know? Can we make a motion tonight to do something that takes effect tomorrow?
It sounds a little dicey to me.
I don't know.
We've got another meeting next week.
Yeah, we have a meeting next week. Maybe we should just put this on the agenda next week as a up or down vote.
But, but I think for the purposes of, of, of consolidating a budget recommendation, we can, we can vote that we want to recommend this. We don't necessarily take that action quite yet, though.
And then we can, and we put on next week's agenda.
Yeah, and then we actually take the action at a future meeting. So I, I would think that the, that the motion would be to remove twenty-five thousand from the tree removal fund with the intention that it would be pre-funded through excess, you know, leftover money from this year.
All right, so I would then make a motion that we take twenty-five thousand dollars of unexpended funds from the software transition project and place it in and set it aside for the tree removal fund and simultaneously reduce the next year's budget for the tree removal fund by twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that work or do we need?
Right. Anybody, anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Linda.
Is that Linda? Okay, thanks, Linda. Okay, any further discussion on that? Just to clarify, what we'll be doing is pre, pre-funding with the excess funds from this year into the into the tree removal fund, and we're just going to decrease the amount allocated to next year's transfer out of the budget. Okay, hearing no more discussion, let's take a vote on favor, I.
Hi.
Hi.
Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, we'll put that into our recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, so you want a formal motion for next mu- next week?
Yeah, why, if you could.
And then you want to take it out of the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, it works for me.
All right. So I'm going to go down to cuts to capital here. The board of selectmen had already reduced capital requests by twenty-five K for the fire department, twenty-five K for removal, fifteen K building maintenance. Potential additional cuts that are in the budget. So these are all in the capital budgets right now, Eric, you're saying?
Yeah, the, the first one, yes, correct. The first one is the loader. Now, the board of finance decided essentially the last two years to not consider the lease payment for the loader as part of the hundred and ten thousand dollar a year capital allotment for Public Works. But that doesn't mean, it kind of is and it kind of isn't. So that's why I put that in there. It just depends what your, you know.
But just to be clear, that's just moving money around from a capital fund to plug the operating budget. That's not money, that's not a cut, that's a transfer.
Well, you're taking money to pay the lease out of the, out of the capital budget.
Right, that's exactly what, what Marcus said would be what you would do. And I mean, it is kind of, yeah, that's exactly what that.
It's accounting, it's not actually cutting anything.
No, let's take it from a different fund, yeah. Well, it, it means it would be thirty-two grand less we'd have in the budget for next year.
Correct.
But we're taking it out of a reserve.
But, correct, we're taking it out of fund.
But it's really.
Don't have it for another purpose.
Correct.
Eric, is the intention to, to like lease to buy on this loader?
Uh, it was. So we, basically, this was one of those things where it was an emergency. We, the backhoe blew up completely, so we were stuck without a backhoe. And we rented one because we needed the piece of equipment. So what happened was we looked at all our options and we got Volvo to agree to basically, we were essentially renting the thing and they allowed us to put the rental fee towards purchase of the machine. And we made a decision simply because that's what we, we didn't have the funds to buy it outright, that we spent town aid road money, basically for our first year. And then we agreed to budget for it in subsequent years and paid off over four years. So that's what we're in the process of doing now.
So the intention then is still to purchase this at the end of the lease?
Yeah, I mean, we're, yes, it's.
I'm just trying to figure out whether it's, and, and maybe that isn't even a right question, but whether it would be appropriate to use the capital fund to basically pay for capital equipment.
Right, and, and that's exactly why I put it in there. I would say that we're, we're struggling to to fund Public Works equipment as it is. So that would essentially reduce thirty-two thousand, the funding available for capital equipment. And as you know, because we had to replace the truck, we essentially ran that budget down to absolute zero. So that capital fund essentially is that, it's not zero, but it's in the two to three thousand dollar range right now. So this would, would basically give somewhere around seventy thousand, you know, or seventy-eight thousand, something like that in the, in that money. Um, you know, or seventy-eight thousand, something like that in the, in that money.
At the end of this lease, do we still have to come up with money to pur- a capital expense to purchase the rest of the loader or does this?
No, no, we're.
And we totally own the whole thing.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, maybe even lease is not the right, I mean, it was, it, it was basically a lease to own deal. Um, so you could, it, you might as well call it a loan, not a lease anyway. Um, yeah. Think of it as we own it and we're just making.
We're done in a few years.
Are we paying interest on it? Or is it?
Yep.
But to me, it's not a capital expense, it's a lease expense.
Yeah, well.
Well, yeah, I mean.
If you're trying to talk.
I wasn't trying to say anything worthwhile anyway, I just said, yeah, I mean, it just depends, if you're buying it to, to own it, I mean, you could, you could make the argument there'd be a capital lease. Eric, it looks like from what I'm seeing on the budget spreadsheet, you've got to note here that this is the last payment on this loader?
I'm pretty sure this is our last payment on the loader.
Okay.
Are you sure?
But to, to get back to what Diana's saying, you know, I, I think you could make the argument that it's a capital equipment purchase, if, if our intention is to purchase it. But what I think we really are facing here is, do we want to do that and deplete this fund? And, you know. Basically throttle that so that we don't have the opportunity to fund other capital works. Or of the other public works, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the plans are with that fund.
Always breaks down, we're always gonna need something.
Can I, can I, uh, just, you know, the capital equipment fund as it currently exists has how much in it roughly?
Two thousand.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the one you were saying was like two, three thousand bucks?
Yeah, yeah, cause remember, we did two things, one, we've opted for a used sweeper, which meant we could buy it out of the money we had.
Right.
Sold everything left to replace the truck.
So wait. Thirty-six thousand, thirty, sorry, thirty-two thousand dollars in change. Public Works Capital Improvement Fund. We're reducing that by that amount. If, if that's the amount of, uh, am I missing something here? If we have two or three thousand dollars left in that fund, how do we do that?
Were we gonna add?
So, yeah, so we're, so what, so let me back up and say.
Are we loading fifty grand in or something? I'm not forgetting.
Yes, so what, what?
Oh, okay.
We have said in the past.
Okay.
If you look at the total of capital works equipment and you cut them down to their minimum operating number pieces of equipment. Which, by the way, is not at all what the public works foreman, you know, would like. Um, you know, but, you know, as we've had this discussion, there are wants and then there are needs. Um, if you look at what a fif- what fifteen-year capital equipment budget does. You know, and we started that calculation kind of after we bought the loader, cause we bought the loader on an emergency basis. Cause we blew up its predecessor. You know, if you look at that, that equates to somewhere around a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year, if you're frugal. Um, you know, over that fifteen-year period. So like anytime you're under a hundred and ten thousand dollars, you're just, you're kind of going in the hole a little bit, that's how I would look at it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So I, I'm not sure if everybody's totally clear on that, but this would deplete that, that target hundred and ten thousand dollar funding. That is planned for next year, and right now you're saying there's very little in there.
See, you know, the net-net, you know, you're, you're talking about roughly going from, you know. Reducing it by about thirty K, because you got about two thousand bucks in there now, you're talking about taking thirty-two thousand six fifteen out.
Sure.
Netted out, you know, it's, it's your negative thirty K, basically.
And, and what Eric's saying is that that thirty thousand is, is that hundred and ten thousand that we're funding, you're reducing that by thirty thousand in this scenario. And basically putting yourself in, in a situation.
In a hole.
Have to make that up down the road, so it's another situation in my mind, which is kicking the can down the road.
Correct, it's absolutely a can-kicking exercise, um, and sometimes the can has to be kicked, but. That is absolutely what this is.
Does anybody want to make a motion on this? I'm personally not in favor of it, although it is tempting.
It's, it's a, it's a nice number, but.
Can we just kind of put it on hold and remember it in case we need it?
Well, it's still here, yeah, we can, we can always, again, we can always go back to it.
We can revisit this next.
Until we have the town budget meeting, all of this is, is just a recommendation, so we can always reverse that.
Right.
My recommendation is gonna go to the town budget meeting, which is gonna happen in early May.
That's right, and I think we should probably table this and come back to it.
Yeah, so.
This is a desperation move, in my opinion.
Yeah.
It's there.
Motion that we added as a, as a recommended reduction, I, I'd say we move on.
Agreed, let's just remember it.
Okay, yeah. This, this is, thank you, Eric, for this document, by the way, it's a good way to kind of roll through this. Um, item two on here, we could choose not to fund the multi-use building fund. AKA the community center, your center, does anybody want to touch this third rail?
Push this button.
I'll say right off, I'm not in favor of reducing this funding.
I mean, you know, there's an argument that says that the town's surviving just fine without it. But we've had this on the drawing board now for how long?
Forty years.
Much longer than I've been in town.
Forty years?
You said, okay, so most of my life. Great. Um, uh, you know, I personally moved into town in oh-seven, I've only ever known. The way things are today, uh, but I know there's a lot of people who. Care about that, and it's, again, this gets back to the issue of what do we do as a town that's worthwhile. So as much as I'd love to save fifty grand. In the budget, that's one I, I'm hesitant to touch. Especially, you know, as somebody who's got kids in the school and we're gonna fund that, but not this, nah, that, that bothers me, so. I'm gonna let that one go personally.
Stop, stop by town hall and take a look at the stakes in the ground with the, uh, the, the, the tape on them, and they've already marked out the spot where it's gonna go, so.
I saw, I saw that, Kurt, I wanna check that out.
That's, uh, that, that.
Where our office is gonna be, it was pretty cool.
That, that itself says it all, as far as I'm concerned, so. Let's go, let's move ahead.
Call before you dig.
Oh, before you. Anybody, uh, any further, you know, want to make a motion around that, or we, are we good to move on?
I think we're gonna move on.
All right, not hearing any, let's move on to item three for the cut the tree trimming budget, not in favor.
Well, we already talked about moving the money around before.
Can I just ask, um, how are we doing on tree trimming generally, Eric? Like, are we catching up, do you feel?
Um. We're doing way better than we used to be doing. Um.
That's good.
So, um, we've done it basically by using a company called Distinctive Tree Care. Just because they got this way cool, super fast.
That, that, that truck that does everything?
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen them.
And so, so last year we were able to cut basically around five hundred and fifty trees. In the right of way that were predominantly dead ash. We should be able to budget to do roughly that same number this year. Other than we are gonna pile up an expense, because we have a problem on Juravati Road, Juravati Lane. We got a bunch of really huge trees that are right by the roadway that we really need to address. Um, and a mad homeowner, cause one of them came down last year and smashed, you know, a bunch of his stuff. Which, it happens, get over it. Um, but.
I live down that way, by the way, so I'm not surprised.
This is a matter of record, we're funding this by fifty thousand dollars in the budget for next year.
Correct, correct.
Um, I, I only, you know, I just asked, cause I, I guess my thought is this, I'm thinking forward. Um, do we get over the hump at some point with the ash problem?
Yep, one way or the other, we're gonna be over the ash hump in about three years, cause all those trees are gonna either get taken down or they're gonna fall down.
Right.
Because from the time they die to the time they fall down is only two to three years.
Um, oh, I know it, I mean, I've had, I've had a bunch of trees come down in my area. You know, I sit and working one day, uh, about a month ago, I'm sitting here in my house, typing away on my computer. And all of a sudden, the whole house shook, I couldn't for the life of me figure out what happened until I went outside. And sort of a massive asteroid come out, come down way in the back and crushed my fence, and so, I, I get it. Um, I just think about, like, okay, we're funding at a certain level. Cause we're kind of in a bit of an emergency situation, frankly, with.
Very definitely, very definitely.
Um, and at some point, hopefully, we can get to a point where we can decrease that budget. But it's like, I think of, I conceptualize it the way that I think about when we were in that period where we, our enrollment at RAM was rising as. RAM's room was falling, we were, we were getting killed on RAM costs.
Sure.
And we gotta get over the hump.
Right.
And you can tell me, you know, can we guesstimate when that might be?
I mean, I think. Um, I think we probably have. Another hundred and quarter to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of short-term, say, three-year expenses. That we're gonna run, and then after that, we're gonna spend probably fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. Just addressing our road canopy, because we haven't done any canopy trimming now in twenty years. And we get a lot of complaints from both the bus drivers and trucks whacking tree limbs driving down roads. And we have to address that, but that's not as big a priority as the dead stuff. That keeps knocking out power and keeps closing our roads every time, I mean, you know, we lost power.
I see that as a problem and a safety hazard, and it's, 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 it's an issue for the fire department and the, you know, the emergency service.
Absolutely.
Have to respond and, yeah.
Yeah, no, this is money well spent, I, I'm just trying to.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good to understand the scope of the problem and the plan, so I, I think your question is, is valid, Rob, for sure.
I mean, and let's be honest, last year I asked for, two years ago, I asked for fifty thousand, we got ten. You know, last year I asked for a hundred thousand, it got fifty, but then we backfilled it with twenty-five. You know, when we still had a bunch of things we had to, had to address. Um, this year we put it in as fifty, but we got a little left in last year's budget, you know, to put towards it. I mean, I wouldn't want to go less than that. Um, I mean, I'd love to be more than that, but, but I get that that's not a practical, you know.
Right, I guess, so, taking that all in, and the reason they kind of asked the question, it was trying to quantify it. Is that to me, saving five K one year on a problem where we're in. You know, a three to four-year stretch where we need to deal with this is kind of dumb. That's, that's just where I'm at.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that.
We stick with where, with the plan we've got, which is by no means overkill. Uh, if it was overkill, we'd be trying to knock this out in one season, and it's not happening. So we're trying to slowly, over the course of three years, chip away at a major problem. Um, uh, I don't see the bank for the buck on five grand.
Does anybody else on the board disagree or want to take another look at that?
I, I personally don't disagree, but Eric, have you seen that monster that's leaning over Lake Road near Brown Drive?
Uh, no, I haven't.
Please take a ride by tomorrow, maybe have Jay with you, look at that, that's gonna do some serious damage when it blows over.
Near Brown Drive?
Brown and. You'll, you'll see it when you come down Lake Road, uh, heading, say, south, uh, southeast.
I, I will tell you that we were intending to, the, the one area we didn't get to last year that we wanted to address. Was, uh, Lake Erdoni in West, cause we know we have some significant concentrations of ash there that we have to deal with. And, and actually, the road I live on, Wheeling Road, is really problematic right now. Um, we're also trying to do a kind of a cooperative thing with the utility company. Um, you know, we're, the. Distinctive Tree wants to do a demonstration for the utility company, cause they want some of that business too. Um, so we've agreed to allow them to demonstrate in our town their ability to trim on the power line side safely. For the utility company, so we're hoping to, to get one street out of the way. Uh, on the utility company side and do a big cleanup, um, in, you know, in a couple of weeks. Um. Yeah, but we got a lot to do, that's for sure, it's a problem.
All right, it sounds like there's no appetite for cutting this unless I'm misinterpreting something, so, um, I think let's go ahead and move on to item four here. Everyone's in agreement. Feel free to speak up if you're not, um, so, item four is to further cut the fire department, this is the, the capital equipment fund budget. Uh, so Eric is just saying, throwing twenty-five thousand out and noting that this is a CIP-approved. Uh, budget for, for the purchases in there, so.
Right, so.
Again, you're, Eric, if you want to comment on that, or?
So I can say that the, of the three items that, so CIP went back and forth with the fire department. Based on the fact that per our capital plan, we were assuming we were gonna put a hundred thousand dollars a year into that budget. To fund equipment, and CIP said, given that, why don't we address the three biggest priorities that you have? Um, and with that hundred thousand dollars, it would have been possible to do all three. Um, the Board of Selectmen cut that budget, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars at one of their budget meetings. But they did that because given the bids that came back. The fire department could actually technically purchase, given the amount of money that's in the budget in that fund now. Plus, the seventy-five thousand that put in it could just barely squeak and purchase all three of those pieces of equipment. Um, you know, if we cut it further, they're not buying all three of those pieces of equipment. Um, and the more you cut it, the more, you know, they're giving it up, and Kurt can tell you, can talk to you more about the impact to that.
Kurt, you, you, uh, you seem to feel like that might be doable, I think, in our last discussion about this, but do you want to go ahead and give us your perspective?
Yeah, yeah, I will, uh, and, and I, I'm the one that was, had the responsibility of getting the, of the three RFPs for each, each of the three items. Um, we went with a total of five originally, five major, and, and these, these are not, uh, you know, apparatus, rolling stock. These are, um, a new jaws of life system, uh, battery-operated instead of hydraulically. Which is, is really, you know, going out of, out of, out of, out of, out of style type, and, uh. Second was the washer, commercial washer dryer for our turnout equipment that we, NFPA is requiring us to. To wash our turnout gear after a, a structural fire, and this all has to do with, uh, with cancer. And then the third one was the air compressor, which fills our SCBA, is a breathing apparatus. Um, even with a cut, I mean, uh, we, we started out with one, one. Item this year originally, and that was the, uh, the jaws of life, like I said, the hydraulic system that we have is becoming antiquated. Uh, we can't get parts for it, things like that, and the battery-operated tools are the. Um, is, is what everyone is going to, and it's a state-of-the-art, uh, today. Um, in, in battery, battery tools, so, um, that, that was our originally request, and then the CIP. And, uh, a couple, you know, between Eric and, and Adrian and a few others chimed in that, uh, that sit on the CIP, said, well. Let, let's go for three out of the five, and, and like, like I said, uh, the total was about a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and. Either a hundred and two or a hundred and twelve thousand, Eric, total, if you added all three up, the way the RFPs come in. And we, we, and we, and we chose the low bid for each. Um, and we went over the hundred thousand, I, I think by twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, which I, I would, I would probably think that the fire commission could find that extra if, if, if needed. Um, you know, by basically, you know, c- cutting into a maintenance budget or, uh, you know, one of the other, one of the other, uh, budget line, line items that we have. Um, but, uh, the, the compressor would be the one that we, we can put off for now. Uh, that was, that was the largest cost of sixty-one thousand dollars, um, because the one we have is twenty-seven years old. Uh, we, we maintain it yearly, uh, through the company that we bought it from. Shipman's Fire Equipment and they happen to be the low bid on the replacement. Of this, of this machine, uh, taking, taking our old one in trade, actually. Um, but that, that, that one, uh, I, I'm, if we had to, we can live with, you know, and, and, and wait another year for it. But the, uh, the jaws of life and the washer dryer were, are both a high priority, uh, for us. So. Um, that, that's pretty much, uh, what, you know, our, our, our take from the last fire commission meeting. Knowing that we were, we, we were cut by the selectmen twenty five thousand, so.
So if, if we were to assume that you guys could, uh, go for another year without that compressor replacement. Um, where would, would, would that take, would that? Would this twenty five thousand dollar reduction Eric's proposing reflect that or, or would there actually be an opportunity to reduce it more?
No, I, 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 I think, you know. For me, the numbers were bouncing around and, and I, 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 I'm not, I'm speaking for myself right now. I'm not speaking for the commission. Uh, cause we, we never really brought it up to, of, of what, uh, what the priorities would be, but just based on the information that we have. Um, we could do that, but, um, it like, like Eric mentioned, uh, whether, even with a twenty five thousand dollar cut. Um, we still may be able to get all three, all three items li- like originally planned, based on what was, was, uh. Left in the, in the fund. And with the, uh, you know, the, the amount of money after the twenty five thousand reduction, that would be getting to the fund. So we still may be able to fund all three.
Yeah.
Twenty five thousand of the border selectmen already did, correct?
Correct. That's not, if you, if you increase that cut and you cut an extra twenty five thousand.
Then we can't.
Then that, that's definitely out here.
That's, that was my question. That's exactly right. That's, that's a huge deal. Right. So, you know, all of that, if, if all of that makes sense. But we take another twenty five out and it doesn't, I mean, that's what we're talking about. The twenty five K that Boris like when I already took out is not.
We, we can, we can withstand that right now and, and still get all three of the, of the.
Right.
The top three.
If you take out another twenty five, you're down to two out of three. You gotta put off.
Then we, we would have to probably cut the, uh, compressor because that was third in the list.
And the compressor, i- as you said, was about a sixty thousand dollar piece of equipment.
The, the low, low bid was sixty one thousand out of three.
So if we cut twenty five, go ahead, Rob, I'm sorry.
So that's gonna be pushed to twenty twenty two.
Correct.
But we're kinda funding half of it, right? Because we're only cutting half of the cost of that. So you.
Right.
You'd almost be banking half of the cost of that compressor.
Right. I mean, granted, I mean, the, the flip side to that and, and like. I wanna find, I wanna find money in this budget too, but the flip side to that is that. You know, we have these capital budgets and they're worked up. For multiple reasons and, you know, the fire department is supposed to be looking ten years out, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. So if we kick the can and we may have to. Um, but you know, we, we create our, we create potential budget crunch. However, many years forward.
You're, you're actually looking at, if, if you, if you put this off a year, say, say the compressor off a year. You're looking anywhere from, uh, I would say four to seven percent increase for, for next year.
Oh, cause of, cause of the increase in the equipment cost?
Just, just the, just the increase in the equipment cost, yes. Our, our equipment averages from anywhere from three to eight percent every year.
That's well above inflation. Wow.
Sure is.
Wow.
Good business opportunity there.
Right? Somebody should arbitrage that. Some fancy Wall Street guys should come in to make a lot of money.
Fire apparatus is three to five percent every year.
I'm just saying, I mean, wow.
Probably just increasing technology sophistication.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that this is doable in the moment. It's doable in the moment. Is it a good call? Overall though. I don't know. I'm fuzzy on that.
Anybody wanna make a motion to, uh, to include a twenty five thousand dollar reduction in the fire department equipment fund?
Mark, you mean the one that's listed already by the selectman?
No, we're talking about additional.
It's an additional twenty five thousand.
We're talking about cutting it again.
This would take it from seventy five thousand to fifty thousand.
Gotcha.
And it, it would eliminate that, that possible third capital purchase or only partially funded for next year, I guess is another way to look at it.
I understand.
No motions? Well, I think that being said, I think maybe what we do is we treat this as we did some of the other items that if we decide we need to come back to it, we always can.
Correct.
Um, in the, in later in this process, up to a point, up to the point we have our, uh, our budget, uh. Uh, meeting for the town.
Or if it gets rejected at referendum and.
Well, then, then we, we have an iterative process and.
We, we, we get there. Hopefully we avoid that because frankly, we cost the town every time we do a referendum. So you wanna, you wanna take something to town that's possible. If, if it happens, it happens. But we try to avoid that.
Well, this could always be, if during the Bud Town Budget Meeting, somebody could always move to make this reduction as well.
That's true.
And it could happen, whether or not Board of Finance recommends it.
You can indeed cut things.
If we leave it in, there's, there's still a couple of opportunities to remove it prior to the referendum.
Very true. All right.
All right. If, uh, if everyone's good with that, let's move on to the next item, which is the Road Improvement Fund. Uh, so twenty thousand dollars Eric said is a. Target amount or suggested possible amount. This reduces the lane miles of shim, crack seal and chip seal by about a half a mile.
I'm just gonna pipe up and say that I went on a walk. Uh, well, little bike ride and one of my kids were on a scooter. We went down our road today and our road is not even one of the roads that will show up on the town. Survey is particularly bad. And it's a mess. It's deteriorating significantly. Um, I don't even know why, since this winter wasn't even that bad. But it's really beat up. Uh, we're way behind on our roads. And I think this is probably the last thing in the budget that I would wanna cut.
I, I can vouch for Rob's last statement, cause I passed them this morning coming from my son's house who lived down the street. So. I did see him and his daughters on their, uh.
Did you really?
Yes, I did.
I didn't realize that was you, Kurt.
You didn't see that pickup truck swerve in your direction? So.
No, 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 I'm.
I was so hyper focused on my seven year old and whether she was paying attention to the cars. I was so freaked out having my seven year old on the road, on the country road. That was just completely focused on that.
You have one daughter in front of you who was, who was going like crazy and you had one, uh, coming up behind. So.
Yes, the going like crazy is my seven year old. Yes.
Well, anecdotes, anecdotes is the only top part of the story, but, uh, you know, I live on Lake Road and there's a section that we've done. You know, it's just south of Merritt, Merritt Valley here, and that was a dangerous stretch just to walk on.
Sure.
My wife, I, and I, both of us have, you know, darn near turned our ankles significantly just because of the gaps. And yeah, the, the shim and crack seal is not optimal. But it does, it does, I, I think it's a safety issue, frankly. I'm also not in favor of removing this. And I, I just wanna point out for the purposes of scope though, that this is a three hundred thousand dollar line item. So this twenty thousand dollar reduction is, is.
It's half a mile is, uh, Eric said.
Right. But remember too, that, you know, right now we're behind about four million dollars on roadwork.
I mean, and, and that's the part that kills me about it. And that's what I'm thinking of is that I know we're trying to backfill.
Further behind, right? So.
Right. This, if memory serves, Eric's plan originally was to try to slowly catch us up over ten years. And every time we cut. We kick the catch up date out. Right, Eric? Is that about right?
Yeah, I mean, you can look at it this way and say that the break even point for our town roads is somewhere around three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Every year we put less than three hundred and forty thousand dollars in our road network, they get worse. Every year we put three hundred and forty thousand dollars, they stay the same. And every year we put more in, they get better. And that's, that's a rough.
So.
Where are we at? Pre-cut?
We're at three hundred thousand, so we're getting worse.
So we're under already?
No, because we're also taking money from town aid road.
Oh, okay.
Funding about four hundred thousand dollars total in roadwork between those two.
Okay. So that, in theory, you're catching up by, you know, sixty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we're doing a little better this year because we have a steep grant. We got a steep grant that we're putting into roadwork. So we're actually putting, you know, we're actually spending over five hundred thousand on roadwork this year. So. So we're making a positive difference definitely this year. Um, but that, that steep grant's a one shot deal. Um, you know, and, and it's a long, it's a long process. I mean, we're, you know. Yeah, we got a lot of ways to go.
No, I, I agree. And I, I actually was really disheartened when I went out on Gilead, uh, today because, uh, you know. My road, I thought my road was in good shape as of last year. And I don't know what happened over the winter, but damn. Uh, it's just really in much worse shape than I thought. And that's not even one of our roads, I think, Eric, that's even on your radar.
No, Gilead's not that bad yet. I mean.
I know. And I'm just telling you.
Right. And, and the thing you're seeing, Rob, is that from the time you pave a road. For about ten years, the road seems fine, no matter what you do. And then, you know, over about a five year period, it, it goes down rapidly. Um, and if you do stuff before that, if you intervene early. You can fairly cheaply delay the aging of the road. But we haven't done that historically. Historically, we've waited till roads were completely trashed. Then we completely rebuilt them and then we ignored them again. And then, you know, the, the problem is, is that we just can't do that anymore because we don't have the budget. So, you know, we're trying to do this as frugally as possible, but, but roadwork is an area where, you know, we'll spend. Believe me, I, I will happily spend every dime you give me.
I mean.
A reminder that we blew this up last year, um, as the Board of Finance.
We did.
And we, we backed way off some of the plans we had.
We didn't wanna go to the town and say we passed a budget unilaterally.
Right.
That jacked up your taxes and we passed an increase. Yes, absolutely right.
Plans last year that we, we shelved. So.
Um, my take for what it is, is that the last thing this road, this town needs to do is to cut our road budget because we're way behind. We're behind, you know, more than I even realized. Um, and I know we've actually caught up a bit and that's great, but we have so much more to do.
Does anybody have an opposite opinion? Does anybody feel like we should, we should look at this? This is about a seven percent reduction or so of the, uh. Of the, uh, overall. Proposed budget.
Seven percent reduction in the overall proposed budget or seven percent reduction in the.
It's seven percent of the three hundred thousand that.
Yeah, the road budget.
Is part of selectmen's budget.
Not the, um, not the town.
Not the town, not including the town aid road and all that, but.
Right.
Okay. So I would say again, let's shell or table that one. Um, and, uh, move on to item number six, which has got the building maintenance fund further. It's a backlog of several thousands, several hundred thousand dollars of projects that are needed. Uh, rated which we accomplish projects, it's simply driven by funding.
Mark, I'd like to make a note also that it's, uh, nine oh four PM.
Okay.
Based on your email earlier today.
These things are aspirational, Kurt.
Jinx.
Yeah, funding is aspirational. Uh, yeah.
Okay, that's pretty funny.
Uh, I, point, point taken. However, I would like to, to move this along. I mean. I'm truly not in favor of this based on what we've talked about and what we know. But if anybody, you have any questions for Eric or want further explanation?
You don't have a lot of money in that fund already, right? I mean, there's not much in there.
No, no, there's about forty thousand dollars as of right now. Um, but the fire alarm's fifteen thousand dollars. The electrical upgrade to this building is about eight thousand. Just to take care of the backups properly. We've got roughly that much that we have to do in public works. Um, we got a tank removal in public works. We gotta do, yeah, I mean. Again, that's one where we're just, we're kinda nickel and diming in, in doing the.
Kicking the can down the road.
Water from coming into the buildings things. We're not doing the optional things or the, it would be nice to do things.
Yeah. And this is only, this is only a forty five thousand dollar line item. So just for context.
Eric, I don't wanna belabor anything, but, um, the tank removal you have to do, is that, is that like an U S T with oil in it?
Uh, we are, so. So we have one tank removal we gotta do quickly, um, and then one we should probably do at some point. So when this building was, when we put the community center on. They drained the oil tank, punched a batch of holes in it and dumped it behind public works and it's been sitting there for the past. You know?
So no, you don't have to drain any oil from it, Rob.
So we need to get rid of that.
It's already been done.
Right.
Hop river back there.
So, so that one we need to get rid of.
La, 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 la. What? I'm sorry. I deal with environmental claims. You did what?
Eric, a story to tell you sometime off, off, uh, off, off, uh. Meeting about that, just offline. Anyway, um, so does anybody have any, any?
Sorry.
Wanna make a move that we, that we cut this fund?
No.
A recommended cut to the fund? Okay, I'm hearing none. Well, that kinda gets to the end of our list here that Eric had proposed. So I guess. What I would suggest is, do any of the Board of Finance members have anything else that they wanna look at? Line items that are in the current budget?
I have a question. There was something in the River East about getting money back from RAM. Do we know how much and what are we gonna be doing with it?
Yeah, we do. That was actually, that was something we talked a little bit about at our last meeting. I think Eric did have the final numbers and that is in this last spreadsheet budget.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the, that was the, the conversation I'd had with Lori Blake prior to that. And then. Strongly suggested that they, they consider returning to town and, uh, I, I wasn't sure how that was gonna roll, but apparently they decided that they would return all of those excess funds to the towns this year.
Yeah, I think we had that last meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about it. I don't know if we had the final numbers, but it's now rolled into this.
Yeah, I, I think if memory serves last me, Eric could come up with the numbers himself, uh, best guess. But now we might have the exact.
Yeah, I have the exact numbers in. Uh.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
The, I think that the one thing too, that, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but I do think that. We should, we should probably talk about whether. Frankly, to use this, uh, use the fund balance and in the way that, well, Adrian has suggested it, we've kinda kicked around the idea of a four has come up a few times. Um, you know, do we wanna use that fund balance, uh. Overage, uh, and, and target that ten percent and use anything above ten percent to offset some of these. These fund, uh, contributions from next year. Cause that's really the mechanism that, how that would work is that.
Capital.
Right. Yeah. So we would, we'd rather than, you know. Funding, you know, the, I don't know, public works, equipment fund that told them out, we just, or the road fund, we move that from the, from the, uh, uh. Reserve fund. So.
Yeah.
I, I know, Rob, you, you suggested earlier, you're not, you're not a fan of that.
No, no, I disagree. No, no, no. I wanna be clear.
You don't like to do that for operating expenses.
For operating expenses, no, but to move that into a capital fund, I'm not opposed. Uh, I was just sort of throwing out there the idea that. Ten percent's a nice, a nice enough target, but it's actually kinda low in my opinion. Um, we did it, we've done it for reasons that frankly are not my own. We did it for reasons because we didn't wanna target on our back of the state. And so we should continue to do that. This is just my own gripe. So put aside my gripe. The point is. I agree that we, if we actually have. Two hundred and fifty-ish in money that. two hundred and fifty-ish in money that is above and beyond our ten percent target, that we should be, feel like we should be able to take at least some of that money and put it into capital. We, my only concern, and the reason why I keep bringing this up with respect to operating expenses, is the idea of getting addicted to that. Every year we do that, you know, and then the money stops at some point and we can't do it anymore. In this instance, if we're putting it into town, if we're putting it into road fund so we can catch up on our roads, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. That's capital. It, it should be done that way. Uh, my issue would be, oh, our mill rate, we want to lower our mill rate and we're going to take that money and we're going to throw it at something that's not a one-off. Uh, I would have a problem with it. I think it's bad budgeting. That's just my own bugaboo, whatever. That's the way I think of it. Um, but no, uh, generally speaking, I'm fine with the idea if we're, if we're real, relatively certain that we have X amount of dollars above our target. Uh, what I'm hearing is that we, two fifty-ish, we don't know exactly. So maybe we take two hundred as our, because we're not sure. And we take that two hundred and we throw it at various capital equipment funds and there we can therefore just decrease the amount we have to plug in from our operating budget. I mean, functionally does the same thing, but it, I think it's better than doing it to just flat out offset operating expenses.
Yeah. It is semantics to a degree and, but I do, I do agree.
Right.
The semantics in this case, I think are symbolic but important.
Yeah. That's where I'm at. You're right. It is in some level semantic, but it's a question of what you get in the habit of doing.
Yeah, yeah. And you made that, I remember, point a couple of times, you know, when we, when I first moved to town, that was, you know, remember you and Dave both, uh, making that point is doing it to cover operating expenses is not a great idea.
So you get used to it and you just keep doing it and then the money runs out.
So I would say, I would offer a counterpoint and here's what I would consider doing. And you may kill me for suggesting this, but if we look at where our biggest kind of liability is, um, in risk, it's really in bridges and culverts.
Okay.
Um, you know, and I mean, honestly, I'm trying to size this budget to stay, make it as reasonable as possible, but my goal really is just to stay above the absolute failure of culverts and be able to replace them before we're stuck with road closures. Um, and I think I can do it with the current budget, but I'm far from guaranteeing that we're going to be able to do it. Now, there is a possibility of a bond also. Um, you know, and I think if we had a couple, a couple of them closed, you know, we'd probably end up bonding to deal with it. But if there was some area you would plus up, it would be bridges and covert funds. Um, you know, um, if you're, we're leaning that direction. Now, I know you probably don't want to increase the budget, so you're probably not going to really want to contemplate that. But if I had a surplus in Eric's world, that's what I would spend it on.
Uh, it's good to know what your failure point, you know, is. That, that's good to know. Like where's danger? And actually, I mean, if a, if a culvert's unacceptable, it closes the road. That's a big deal.
Right. Yep.
A road slowly deteriorating is one thing and it's bad.
Yeah, you just get front and realigned every couple of weeks and it's fine, you know.
But you can't drive on this anymore because the culvert's no good is a much bigger deal. Yes.
Yep.
How about, uh, you hear from the rest of the board is, is anybody have any strong feelings one way or the other about the use of this, uh, the, the fund balance to, uh, to offset this a little bit? You know, Rob, throughout the idea of maybe rounding it down to about two hundred thousand dollars.
And that's just my thought on being safe because we don't have the final audit.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable than that than, than trying to maximize it somehow.
Right, or if it's two twenty-five, whatever, uh, you know, we don't know whether it's two fifty or two forty or two sixty. I'm a little worried about budgeting on something that I don't have the final numbers for. And this is why every year we'd like to have the audit in and we don't have it in and it causes. Eric, do you have a sense for how off we might be?
I mean, it would be nice to come up with at least a mill because I mean, otherwise we're not, we haven't cut anything yet. We still.
I know.
Where we were last week.
Well, hell, I, I'll, I'll, actually Diane, we're, if, if we look at what we've done so far, uh, we've taken about eighty-two thousand out of the budget. Not a huge amount, you know, but it is, it's something, right? Yeah, it's not a mill.
Two fifties a mill, roughly?
Two seventy.
Uh, it's gone up, you see, because the rebound.
Yeah.
It used to be, you know, two forty or something. Um, okay.
Yeah, because I mean, the taxpayers are going to look at the mill rate. What am I going to have to pay? Do I mean?
No, agreed. I mean.
So, well, let me, let me just for the purposes of, of illustration, if we were to apply two hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance and offset contributions to one of our capital improvement funds, that would put us at two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars currently, which is more than a mill.
Oh, current cuts plus the two hundred.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the final mill rate would then be?
Just under thirty-seven, like thirty-six point nine nine eight.
Hey, less than Simsbury winner. Uh, sorry. Uh, I have friends in Simsbury, my bad. Uh, so, okay.
That's, that's.
We're getting there.
I think, yeah.
You know, look, you know, you guys all know where I came from, you know, a couple of meetings ago, where I just sort of threw out as a target. Could we get the five percent? I don't even know that I'm saying that five percent is my number. I was just like, okay, we're at seven and a half. Can we get to five? Where does that put us? Are we at five if we do that?
We're closer to if, if I've got these calculations set right, that's closer to less, I think it's a little less than four.
Okay. Um, that's still a significant ask of the town.
Yeah.
But that is well within kind of my original gut take. So I'm interested. That sounds, you know, I, I don't think we're getting out of this budget season with zero increase. So that's realistic. I don't think anybody here actually thinks that, that we will. Last year, I believe we did what? One point seven five? So, you know, that's the sort of thing that somewhere between that and where we are. Let's see if we can tighten it up, but you know, personally, I always want to try to take a budget to town meeting and, and referendum that'll pass. That's my gut take, having had been through some periods where we failed repeatedly at length. So, that's just my take, but I, I don't, look, I know we didn't do a lot tonight in terms of substantive decision-making, but I think we talked through a lot of good things. I get mad.
I think, I think we've, we've, we're zeroing in on what we're going to end up with, with the town.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, you know, I think the only real, to, to me, the real question mark is what do we do with the fund balance and how much?
Yep. Yep. And you know, if we, if we're confident that it's two fifty-ish, do we go to two twenty-five, for instance? Is, you know, I said two hundred. That was just off the cuff as a super safe number. When you have a fuzzy number and you don't have a full audit, you don't want to overstep. Right? But maybe, is it two hundred? Is it twenty-five? What is the safe number? Um, and then what do we put that towards? Do we, do we, you know, my opinion will be obviously you throw that a capital.
Yeah, I would agree.
And that would help a lot, obviously. That number would cushion the blow significantly. I, I don't think that throws out all the issues we have to work through with the Board of Ed, but it helps. And I say that as somebody who has friends on the Board of Ed.
We all have friends on the Board of Ed.
Right?
I'm married to one.
Hey. Hey. Yeah. All right, well, I'm going to shut up now. I'm good for now. I'm happy to come back next week.
Well, I, I, I don't want to, I, I, I would really like to get us, and I know we're past nine o'clock, so I'm not going to push it, but you know, we're, if we, if we were to do two twenty-five, I'll tell you where we are right now. It would be, uh, that would mean that our estimated mill rate would be at about three six point eight nine, which is a three point six percent increase. So I, what, I think what I would like to do, what I'd like to have the board leave this meeting doing is, is have some agreement that we want to propose, or at least have this type, this is the budget where we are right now. We're, 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 you know, we, we're comfortable with this. We can always come back and change it, you know, as Lenz and, or Linda said, we can table something, we can come back, so.
All right, so I, I, there, I'll, I'll go ahead and do this, Mark. Um, I will move then that we take two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in funds that are to, what, roll over from the current budget and utilize those funds to.
Road Improvement Fund? Is that the one you were?
I'm just gonna, I don't care which fund we pick. I, I was going to try to be nonspecific, but if we have to be specific, let's pick a big fund we can dump.
Let's, let's pick it, let's pick a fund and I would say Road Improvement Fund is the good, is a three hundred thousand dollar line item. It's an easy, clean one to do there.
Is road, does that have, uh, culverts and stuff in it or is that a different fund?
No, the, well, yeah, the Bridge and Culvert Fund is different. It's only got, it's only funded a hundred thousand in this current budget. So if we were going to do the fund balance, what I would say is that we will move the fund balance into the Road Improvement Fund and reduce the funding in the twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget by that amount.
I mean, could I move, we split it in half between two funds?
Yeah.
It's not that hard.
Good, well, it won't.
So, all right, I, I would move that we take the two twenty-five that we think we're getting in excess funding from last year's budget and split it evenly between the road fund and Bridge and Culvert Fund. How about that?
Okay, well, Bridge and Culvert's only a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Oh, so I'm boosting it above its current level?
Which is great. I like it.
Now, Eric, I see his point though.
That, that's. I mean, we could do that. We could increase the Bridge and Culvert Fund to a hundred.
No, I, I see your point though. From the standpoint of budget reduction, that doesn't make sense. Fair. Um, I refrase. All right, Tony, the road fund is the easy one because it's got enough in it that we're not increasing. Okay, fair. So, we take the two twenty-five from the current year's budget that we think is going to roll over and we put it into Town Eight Road, or sorry, the road fund. Uh, and you know, TBD on what we do after that. That's my.
Well, well, what we would be doing is reducing the, the transfer to the Road Improvement Fund for the next year's budget.
Right.
As an, as an offset. Yeah, okay.
And then if we want to do something with the Culvert Fund, we can do that separately.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion. I'm sorry if that's not clear. That was a little mangled. Uh, I plead that it's almost nine thirty in my defense.
Anybody, uh, anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. I wish I had a gavel, right?
Diane, I, I feel like you and I have the same thing going on. We're both kind of like, yeah.
I'm tired.
So, Mark, I, I just.
You're just like, yeah.
Go ahead, Eric.
You're accounting in the reductions, you're accounting still for the elimination of the Building Department Administrative Position, correct? Because you guys haven't actually voted on that. So if you're going to do that, you should make a motion to do that.
True, we kind of didn't.
We didn't, we didn't, oh, I, we didn't, we, yeah, maybe we did not.
That was the thing where I wasn't sure.
For a couple of weeks until we can figure out what's going on.
But I'm sorry, you're saying we want to not put that in there for now until we find out?
Well, what, you're, the eighty-two thousand dollar number you're giving, that includes that, correct?
Correct, it does.
So yet you as a board haven't actually made a motion for that? So if you're going to include that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion then that we also recommend to reduce the Building Department, uh, Budget Line Item by forty-five thousand dollars in anticipation of a possible combined position, which we can reverse in a future meeting if it turns out that that's not tenable. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion that we haven't already had? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion also passes. Thank you, Eric. Yeah, you're right.
All right.
It's kind of hoping to avoid my, I boast that this is probably better this way. All right. Okay, now that does get us to a reduction that, as I said, puts us at three point six, thirty-six point eight nine mil. If my calculations are correct, which I believe they are, which is a current three point six percent, uh, mill increase. Um, so I will, uh, I've got this updated in the spreadsheet that I have. I'll update the actual columns. Eric, I'll feed that back to you. And if you want to just review it with Sheri and just make sure everything seems to be correct and then we can distribute it after that.
Good.
Okay, um, I do have a couple of other quick things. I know it's late, uh, but I think it makes sense for us to get some dates on the, on the, uh, calendar. Um, they are related to the budget. Um, so looking at the calendar, we are getting down kind of to the wire, folks. We have to have a town budget meeting at the beginning of May. So I'm going to move that we have the Town of Andover Budget Meeting scheduled for Thursday, May sixth at seven P M. Uh, the reason for that is we've got a couple other, uh, uh, votes early on in the, uh, that week. And, uh, so we're trying to give the registrars kind of a, of a break and then go to Thursday. Um, I know Thursday's not always the best for everybody, but, uh, maybe with enough advanced planning, uh, that'll work. Um, does anybody have any thoughts about? I'm sorry, it's too much talking there.
Is that the annual meeting or the referendum we're talking about?
No, that is the annual budget meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of working backwards. The referendum was scheduled after that meeting.
Okay, that's the meeting that has to get things to center referendum.
Correct.
Yeah, well, that.
That date works for me.
Will that be a remote meeting?
No, that, well.
I would think so. It's going to be tough to do. I don't know.
It is in flux right now because nobody knows exactly the uh, Governor's Executive Orders Authority would have run out April.
They're extended until May twenty.
Right. They have been extended, however, they haven't, they're not saying which ones they're going to extend. So, the answer is we don't know. Right now, we're setting up for an in-person budget meeting that would also be remotely broadcast.
Will there be people who can participate remotely though?
I mean, maybe.
Yeah.
Right. That's a stretch for us technologically, but you know.
I would like to see us get as many people as we can in person because we didn't have anything last year. Give everybody the opportunity.
Yeah, and, and I think we just have a better understanding. And the more people that are there, the more people hear about it, the more people are going to be, you know, understand what we're trying to do and, and we'll, we'll know kind of what the, what the temperature of the residents are. But.
I'm just thinking maybe, you know, some seniors may not want to come and people may be out of town, things like that.
Yeah, well, I, I think we leave. Yeah, well, I, I think we leave the format to the meeting to be determined, but by law, we have to have it within the first two weeks of May.
Right.
And so I think that that date makes sense, Eric proposed it, and you and I were talking about the calendar, and I think it does make sense, it gives us a little flexibility and, and timing to the, go to the referendum.
Okay.
And actually, to be perfectly honest, I think the Board of Selectmen set that date, and they've already kind of selected May sixth anyway. Um, you set the public hearing date, but I don't think you set the budget meeting date technically. I, I could be wrong, though, I mean, hopefully you agree with the sixth anyway.
I agree with it, but let's get it on the calendar, there's nothing else in the town calendar that day except the Democratic Town Committee earl, meeting earlier, so. Yeah, I think it's, it's, uh, it's appropriate.
Good.
Okay, we still have a motion on the floor to, uh, to set that meeting that date or approve that date, um, Zimba want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louise, seconds, thank you, any discussion further? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Was that an aye for, Rob, it came in late, was that, was that?
Yeah, sorry about that, that was an aye, I was muted.
Okay. And then, no, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, okay, very good, um, I would also propose. That we set the, uh. Town of Andover. Oops. Problem out here.
So that would be the Board of Finance. Budget. Uh, public hearing.
The pub, yes, the Board of Finance Budget here, this is the public hearing that has to precede. The meeting. Um, again, this is just where we present our proposed recommended budget and, uh, here. Input from the town, uh, by which we would potentially modify our proposed budget before bringing it to the budget meeting. Uh, I would move that we schedule that meeting for. Wednesday, April twenty-first. I think we had a special budget meeting scheduled then, and we could. Basically. Co-op that date for the, for the budget hearing.
We did indeed have a, uh, budget meetings, uh, a Board of Finance.
So, so it's, it's already a pre-planned meeting, uh, but we'll change that into our, our budget hearing date, if anybody, if, if everyone agrees. Have a second motion?
Okay.
Anyone, anybody want to second the motion?
Oh, Dave did. Right?
Rob did, Dave did, okay.
I thought I heard.
That's fine, I'll take it.
For the record, Dave seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Hearing none, any abstentions? Also hearing none, the motion passes, okay, I think that's all we have to do as far as setting the calendar, um, assuming the Board of Selectmen agree with the May sixth, I think that works all around. Uh, following that, uh, that town meeting on the budget. Uh, for which we need to do a little bit of work, and by we, I mean probably me and Eric mostly. Um, we have to do a five-year capital plan as part of that and just do a general presentation of the budget. Uh, explain where, where we are and what we're doing. So that, uh. We'll go forward there, um. Okay, I think that's, uh. That's kind of where we are, I guess the last thing that I would personally like to just note is that I will apparently be out of the country for two weeks, starting next Friday. So I will be. Doing a budget hearing remotely. Um. As, as. I am now, but, uh, I, I won't be in the country, so we'll have to. Uh, kind of run that remotely, um.
Be six hours ahead, right?
Yes, I will. That's one in the morning, you know.
I was gonna say.
Like a standard Board of Finance timing these days. Uh, yeah, it's, that one's gonna be a little tough, but I'll, I'll make it work somehow, um, and hopefully I have, uh, adequate internet, uh, service. Um, I also will not be here for, uh, the budget meeting we have scheduled for the fourteenth. Um, we'll have to see where we get next week as to how much, uh, needs to happen in that budget meeting, um, kind of hoping that. We may be able to wrap this up next Wednesday if fall goes well, uh, but there's lots to be. Considered, uh, until then. Um, so that's just informational for everyone's sake. Okay, anybody have anything else, uh, they'd like to bring before the board regarding the budget?
So I just have one final thing to say, there will be some slight, and I mean slight numbers changes. When we get the actual, uh, employee cost for healthcare, which we will plug in as soon as Sherry and I get that information. We just physically don't have it yet. Um, and, you know, that, that's basically it from the town's perspective unless you have other, you know, things you wanna, wanna consider.
Okay, thank you, Eric, um, hearing none, I'm glad you brought that up, forgot about that earlier. Uh, next agenda item is public speak, Amanda, do you want to pull the, pull the crowds and see if we have any public speak? Request?
Sure thing, okay. So we have Jeff Murray.
Hi, I saw Kurt yawn a few times, so I'm gonna keep this, uh. Keep this kind of, uh, simple, but, um, yeah, great job, everybody going through the town budget tonight, I think it was, uh. It had to be done, um, but as we probably all find out over the last two hours, it's pretty lean. Uh, there's not a lot of, uh, reductions to be had there. And, um, I'm gonna be looking forward next week, I guess we're gonna talk about the education budget, or you are. And I'm gonna be looking forward to, uh, Valerie's presentation on the suggested. Levels of funding, uh, reductions and, and what they can do to maybe find some efficiencies there, so I'm kind of interested to see what she's gonna find. And, um. I think it could get us down to a palatable level if she, um, if she finds some efficiencies there. Um, with that said, I mean, I'm not trying to be a. Um. Like a hawk trying to, to, to cut the budget, actually, I've got a second grader in the school. Um, I just wanted to say that I really want to keep the costs at the school low, uh, compared to competing towns, because eventually. At the state level, we keep, uh, we keep hearing about this regionalization that keeps coming up. And, um. If we stay competitive with regional towns or, or a little bit less. Um. It's a better chance for us to keep that school open if we do ever regionalize, if we become a very expensive school. And the state that has a say in it, they're gonna be looking at us and saying. Andover Elementary needs to go, I mean, I don't really want to lose that school, I want to keep that school there, and that's why I'm fighting. To keep our school running as efficiently as possible. And I know I've sent a lot of suggestions to the Board of Finance, I've discussed this in, in depth with Valerie, but. I still believe that there's some deficiencies to be made there, and I think if they are realized, we could probably. Uh, come forth with something that would be very palatable to the residents in town. I really like what you did tonight, um, I would like to see that done at the school level, I'd like to see us be able to look at those expenses and, and have them justify their increase. Because I think we owe that to the taxpayers of Andover, I think we owe it to all the residents, so. With that said, I'm looking forward to next week's presentation, thanks.
Jeff?
Thanks, Jeff. Carol Lee?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Joanne Hubbard?
Thanks, Amanda, yeah, I'll keep mine short, too, I really like all the work that was done tonight, I appreciate the process, um. You know, you keep finding a little more and a little more, so, you know, thank you for doing that for the town, um. You know, like it or not, we have so many things that have to be taken care of to make our town, you know, presentable to families to move in, you know. Like Jeff Murray just said, I agree, you know, I, I'm in favor of the school, I like the school, I hear how much parents love it. I know how much the administrators are working hard there, it's just hard to fathom the high budget. Um, again, we're taking so much time, or I'm taking so much of my time just to kind of, um, address things because I do work in a school. And I feel like maybe my voice can be heard a little, and I do care, you know, a four million dollar school is just hard to fathom, the town being able to sustain that. You know, families aren't coming in, I'm afraid our enrollment's gonna get lower and lower. And then there's gonna be no choice but to regionalize, so, again, I want to work with the town, you know, I want to see the town look nice and safe. I'm afraid of the trees falling down, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of roadwork that's spoken about and a lot of trees that really need attention. So, you know, money has to be found somewhere, so I really am looking forward to the conversation next week, too, I can't wait to hear it be, you know. Whatever comes to the table, because I've heard the town two weeks in a row now. Thank you so much and good luck with all you do.
Thanks, Joanne. Valerie Bruno?
I'm all set, Amanda, thank you.
Thanks for joining.
It looks like it might be everybody. Okay. So if that's it for public speak, the last agenda item is adjournment. Let's see, who is yawning the most, you know, who wants to make a motion to adjourn? Kurt raises his hand, you're, you're muted, Kurt.
Sorry about that, I'm, I'm happy to be here, I, I moved to adjourn.
I.
Russ is seconded. All in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, thank you, everybody, ran a little later than we'd like, but I think we got done what we needed to do. Uh, update it and, uh, talk to you next week, take care, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.